You're watching B C T V. We're all about Branford. You're watching B C T V, Branford Government Television, our service of Branford Community Television. This program is brought to you in part through the support of the town of Branford.
We'll call this meeting of the Branford Planning and Zoning Commission to Order. It is Thursday, November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. I have seven oh one P M. We will introduce members of commission and staff. Joe Chadwick, are you here?
Joe Chadwick is present.
Thank you, Joe. Fred Russo, Fred, are you here?
Fred Russo, present.
Marcy Palusi, Marcy, are you here?
Marcy's here.
And Sharon Hutner, Sharon, are you here?
Sharon is here.
Great, and I am Chuck Anders' chair. Our staff this evening is our town planner, Harry Smith. Harry, are you here?
Present.
And our assistant planner, Evan Bryning, are you here?
Here.
And I believe our clerk recording secretary, Michelle Martin, is also lurking out there. So with that, I'm going to ask our secretary to read the legal notice of public hearing. Marcy, can you do that?
I can. This is Marcy Paluzzi, the Planning and Zoning Commissioner of the town of Branford, Connecticut hereby gives notice of public hearings to be held on Thursday, November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two at seven P M. By remote technology to consider the applications listed below. Information regarding how to participate in the public hearings will be provided on the commission's meeting agenda that will be posted on the town's website at least twenty-four hours prior to the meeting. One, application number twenty-two dash ten point one, amendments to section six point six, alternative energy in section four point one eight to allow large-scale ground-mounted solar arrays as currently defined in section two point two, Daniel Raben applicant. Item number two, application number twenty-two dash ten point three, a P D D plan development district modification changes to allowed uses in this P D D located at eleven fifty-nine through eleven sixty-seven Main Street, eleven seventy-one Main Street, L L C applicant and owner. Item number three, application number twenty-two dash ten point five, special exception for further modifications regarding the renovation of an existing apartment building located at four Three Elms Road, four Three Elms LLC care of Kurt Whitick, applicant and owner. Item number four, no, application number twenty-two dash ten point eight, special exception modification for changes to an existing multifamily, three-family dwelling located at fifty-six through fifty-eight Harrison Avenue, Richard Pelletier applicant and owner. Item number five, application number twenty-two dash ten point four, special exception, section six point eight, grading within a hundred feet of a critical coastal resource and coastal site plan for a single-family home located at seventy-two Sunset Beach Road, markdowns applicant and owner. At said hearings, all persons will have the right to be heard. Copies are on file in the Planning and Zoning Commission's office at the Planning and Zoning Department, ten nineteen Main Street, Branford, Connecticut zero six four zero five. Written communications may be sent to the above address or to planningandzoning@branford-ct.gov. The foregoing leader notice was published once in the sound on Thursday, November third, two thousand and twenty-two and on November tenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Chuck Anders' chair. Thank you, Marcy. Uh, so we'll follow our normal format for public hearings. That is, uh, the applicant goes first, makes us including any consultants. After that, we turn it over to the commission and staff. We typically hear a summary of a staff report, open up for questions, comments by commission members. At that point, we'll open it up to the public and I'll ask, uh, our staff to explain how to participate after the public. The public proportions, uh, that are brought up. And, uh, we may or may not close a public hearing depending how things go. And with that, Evan or Harry, can you explain to the public of how to participate in the public hearing?
Uh, sure. Evan Bryning, assistant town planner. Uh, during the public hearing, you'd like to, uh, comment or ask any questions. Down at the bottom of your screen, there is a reactions button. You can select that and then there's the option to raise your hand. You can also type into the chat that you'd like to participate. Um, if you're dialing in by phone, you can press star nine. Um, and we ask that everybody, uh, begin their comments with their name, um, and then proceed.
Chuck Anderson's chair. Thank you, Evan. With that, we'll, uh, we'll go through our public hearing items. We do have a number of items, uh, on the agenda this evening. First item is a continuation of a public hearing of Westford uh, Real Estate Management LLC Jefferson Woods Community, Inc., uh, eleven dash four oh four Jefferson Woods, special exception construction of additional parking paving. This is a public hearing that we opened and have been continuing. Uh, it involves some uh, parking and, uh, some landscaping that was removed and some additional parking that was, uh, put in in the Jefferson Woods condominium. And, uh, there was going to be some revisions, uh, that I think are still being worked on. What's the status of this one, Evan or Harry? Are we, my understanding is we're going to continue this because the app is still working on things. Is that correct or where are we?
Uh, it is. They have, um, I believe they've almost completed the lighting plan, uh, and they're working on the landscaping plan now, but they granted an extension to the December eighth meeting. Um, and we'll work with them along with the neighbors to try to, uh, get all those plans that you guys had asked for at the, I think it was the October sixth, uh, meeting.
Great. Okay, so for item number one, this side, we're going to continue then to our December eighth meeting. Thank you, Evan. So, uh, if you hear on item number one, just, uh, that matter is being continued. That brings into item number two, which is Daniel Raben applicant, the amendments to section six point one six, alternative energy and section four point one eight to allow large-scale ground-mounted solar arrays as currently defined in section two point two of the regulations. Is the applicant ready to proceed?
Yes. This is Daniel Raben, and, uh, first I'd like to thank the Planning and Zoning Commission for considering these changes, these amendments in, in the, uh, alternative energy regulations. Um, the changes that are under consideration tonight have to do with large-scale solar in non-residential districts in Branford. There were several, um, questions at, at our initial public hearing uh, concerning water drainage and, um, uh, vegetation under solar panels. And, uh, I think the first of these will be, will be addressed in, in some detail and the second in a little bit of detail. So the, um, the, the major thing that, that we've done as, as applicants is to refer to two documents. Um, one is the section six point nine E of the, of the Branford regulations, and these cover, uh, the, the peak flow from storms that is evaluating uh, the, the piece of property in, in, uh, question and making an, an estimate of how much uh, water could possibly, um, uh, fall on that land in a twenty-four hour period. Um, and the standard that's used or presented in the, in the town regs is the twenty-five year level, not the, not the hundred-year storm, but the twenty-five-year storm. Um, it also deals with the, the capacity of the detention volume that is required. Um, it requires the applicant for, uh, for the, uh, solar permit to make some runoff calculations, and there are several other things. The other, uh, document that we refer to is the state guidance on stormwater management. And this is a document that, uh, in his, in his discussions with the state, Harry Smith uncovered recently and, um, that document is, uh, was effective at the end of two thousand and twenty. So that document delineates considerations for the slope of the land. Um, the vegetation area vis a vis how much, what the area of the solar panels is, and it allot us, uh, a, an equal um, surface area for vegetation. It strongly encourages, uh, planting of pollinators around the area. And it also strongly discourages the use of chemical fertilizers and pesticides. And that's actually a, a change that was, uh, introduced by the state, uh, during the course of two thousand and twenty. It also deals with the sheet flow. That is, you have to, um, consider, uh, the sheet, a sheet flow should be the objective of the, of the design of the land, um, both for flat and for slightly inclined and also more inclined, uh, plots. Um, it also deals with the setback from wetlands and waters which should be a hundred feet. There is a, an, uh, an exception that can be requested to, to, um, to reduce that by half, but no more than half. And by the same token, the property, there's a, a setback of fifty feet for the property boundary. They specify this sediment load of the runoff and, uh, they also specify oversight meetings and inspections as well as the documentation that is required during the course of the, uh, planning and building and, um, final approval process. And the last thing, well, not the last thing, but the last highlight that I'd like to mention is they require a hydrologic study of the, of the ground. So, um, those are the major changes, uh, as noted in the, in the documents that you've received. We, we are requesting, uh, a change from not allowed, uh, of of, uh, large-scale solar, not allowed in, in any zone in, in the town of Branford to not allowed in the business center, but allowed by special exception in all of the other zones. So, um, that's by way of introduction. I, I know that Harry has the staff report and some other comments to make. And, uh, obviously, if there are any questions from the commission, I'll, uh, I'll do my best to address them. Thank you.
Chuck Anderson, sir. Thank you, Mr. Raven. Harry, do you want to review the staff report with us?
Sure. Harry Smith, town planner. Uh, let me share my screen here. Um, hopefully everyone can see this. Um, these are the amendments that were approved, um, the end of last spring, um, in May. And I just want to walk the commission through them quickly, if that's okay with you, to, uh, refresh everyone's memory. Uh, since some of these items are not shown and they're sort of, you know, the building blocks on which the latest regulation amendment proposal is constructed. Um, so we had a series of definitions, uh, solar array itself. This was reworked during the public hearing process. There's some comment, I think, uh, from one of the commission members. Um, we have definitions for large-scale ground-mounted solar array, which is limited to an area equal to one-half the footprint of the principal structure. And we have a definition of a large-scale ground-mounted solar array, even though they were not permitted under the changes to this set of regulations, the definition was established in this set of regulations. So that is essentially, it may be the principal use and it exceeds one-half the footprint of the principal structure. So you, you may wonder what the upper limit is, and I'll just throw that out right here, which is the, uh, threshold of state regulatory, uh, purview. Um, the Connecticut Siting Council uh, has regulatory and basically preempted local review of all, uh, solar array installations that generate more than one megawatt of power. Um, how big is that? Well, the, uh, solar array at the Tabor property, um, is just under the threshold. It's about nine hundred and eighty kilowatts, I believe. Um, and that covers approximately six acres. Um, now that's technology that was, I think, about two years ago, and my understanding is, uh, that's evolving and, um, you can get more power out of smaller arrays, and that is the general trend anyway. So how much that's going to change, you know, in the future, I really can't say, but that's just to give everyone a yardstick to understand how big these things could be, um, in terms of the category it's defined here. So went on and, um, you know, under accessory uses for residential, which I'm not going to, going to, we, you know, added the roof-mounted solar arrays, small-scale ground-mounted, um, as an accessory use in the commercial zones, business zones, again, roof-mounted, small scale, were allowed everywhere. And there was a whole new section added to the regulations that Mr. Rabin alluded to, alternative energy. And, uh, again, went over the criteria for the roof-mounted solar arrays, criteria for small-scale ground-mounted solar arrays. And, um, defined at least here, um, you know, some potential criteria for large-scale ground-mounted solar arrays in the business zones, non-residential. Um, this is in the regs, but it's not, it's sort of a moot point because when you go down to the land just, I mean, the, uh, use table back up here, you can see it was N N N across the board. So there's no district in town that the commission allowed these things at that point. So as Mr. Rabin mentioned, the proposal is now to allow them in every zone, every, excuse me, non-residential business zone, accepting the B C, which is a zone around the, uh, the town center, just from Main Street, um, to the north, down the hill towards the post office. Um, so I'm going to go back to, I think, the beginning of this. Bear with me for a second. So this is the current set of amendments proposed. Uh, changes to the use table, as you can see right here, making it all by special exception approval, except the B C. Um, the same wording under section six point one six until you get down to requirements for large-scale ground-mounted solar arrays. So here in underline, it posed additions, which as Mr. Rabin mentioned, referred to, uh, section six point nine E of the current zoning regulations. Um, as well as this guidance document that, um, I found online. Um, I did review this document, and this was included with the package of commission, uh, with the town engineer who thought it was had no concerns with using it as a reference document. Um, I also, similarly to how, uh, the commission regulates, uh, soil erosion and sedimentation control, uh, whereby there's a reference to the state GNDP issued. I see them right from my desk here, Connecticut Guidelines on Soil and Sematization Control. Um, there is this other section in respect to soil erosion control that basically allows alternatives to be used subject to the discretion of the commission. So we provided this alternative approach. So if there's any concern or issue that could be brought up to the commission and you can demonstrate the appropriateness of that alternative design criteria, principal method, et cetera. Um, you know, I would imagine, and it's sort of put in here, the approval of this designated agent. That could be the town engineer, uh, who would be the person with the expertise, uh, could be the commission upon the advice of the town engineer, uh, making that determination. That's really up, I think, to the commission. Uh, this was our suggestion. I mean, I did work with Dan on putting this together. Um, and this here is, um, the reference from six point nine, where you can see we're using the reference to the Connecticut Guidelines on Soil and Erosion Sematization Control. Um, and these are all the other requirements to section six point nine. This is the general reference document we found first. Um, which is really a guidance document, which I think again makes sense because the other document, Soil and Erosion Control, is a guidance document. Um, looking for what might be an update to this, I contacted staff at the E P and found there was an updated document. Um, after this was put out there, uh, the D P went through the process of amending their uh, permit for construction activities, general permit for stormwater discharge methodology control, um, for large-scale construction activities. And they included basically a reworked version of the guidance as an appendix to that general permit. And I will show you that included that with the staff, um, report that went out to the commission. Um, again, this is all requirements, the original January two thousand and twenty. Um, and I will, when we get down there, talk about the appendix I document to the general permit. Um, and talk about what's new and what is part of the original guidance document, so you get an idea. Um, so again, that's down here. Let's see if I'm missing anything. Um, oh, I just want to mention that, you know, with, since it's included in the general permit for construction activities, the new appendix I contains, uh, some regulatory process requirements that may not really be appropriate to just generally reference without some kind of caveats. So that applicants are clear that some of the, uh, regulatory requirements do not apply, for example, as requirements for posting letters of credit. Um, and that they should be, you know, continue for a certain length of time. Uh, the commission only has the power to, um, have financial guarantees for a period of a year, um, I believe, post, um, acceptance of improvements. So some of the requirements in there have, you know, contain things that the commission doesn't have the power to regulate or require. Um, and things that you may not want to require. So some of this, you know, frankly, I found this document at the end of last week. Thought, oh, this is the newest document. We should refer to it. So I included it in a, um, staff recommendation. But on further reflection, it looks like should probably understand that much better and look at the regulatory requirements within it and probably come up with some language for our zoning regulations, um, that make it clear that those are not part of the deal, so to speak, for the applicant. Any applicant coming in through this, should the commission want to proceed and adopt this? So, um, at this point, I mean, I can go through that appendix I, and maybe I should do that, but if there are any other questions, maybe I'll just stop here and see what commission members have to say or any questions you have and what you might want me to highlight.
Chuck Anderson, sir. Thank you, Gary. Any questions, comments from commission members?
Um, excuse me, Joe Chadwick speaking. Um, is, is there any mercy given to the application of solar arrays over steep sites? Because we regulate steep sites with respect to building and parking, but that could be the perfect place to put a solar collector.
Yeah, I mean, okay. There is.
I have three questions. That's, okay. Just go ahead and answer that one. I'll, I'll, I'll keep bothering you.
Okay, I mean, it's, I'll give you the quick answer, and then there's a more detailed answer when I go to the appendix I. But the quick answer is it comes down to how, um, the guidance, well, the appendix I treats calculating, um, the area of the solar panels, um, for steep slopes greater than fifteen percent. It considers, um, the entire area, surface area of all the solar panels to be impervious surface and requires the, uh, design of a stormwater management system to account for that amount of runoff. So basically it says you're going to get more runoff with a steep slope. You have to, you know, design that um, into it. So you have to have bigger detention basin. Um, I think there's also some requirements in there for basically, um, check burns, um, to make sure there's not, um, um, erosion occurring. And I can go through all those, but it treats it differently for slopes less than fifteen percent, as long as you meet all the design parameters. Um, you can assume that the solar panel surface area is not impervious surface, which would reduce the calculated volume of stormwater runoff. So that's sort of the shorter answer, and I can go over all the criteria and everything else when we get there, but.
Okay, I, I was more, more curious about the permission to use and permission to occupy a steep slope.
Yeah, it doesn't rule it out. Um, it just creates, um, basically, um, the requirement for, um, the design of a greater volume of stormwater. Assuming there will be such thing, it just sort of ups the game, if you will. I have to design for stormwater runoff.
Okay. Um, and if one were to put solar collectors over a parking area.
Yep.
Um, that would be considered a roof and not necessarily ground-mounted solar, um, collector.
Uh, it seems like the state guidance here in this appendix I, um, seems to envision that as, um, not a roof-mounted. Now, we haven't really said either way. We probably should be clear. Um, I think it depends whether you're, uh, you know, talking about the roof of a garage within which is covered, you know, this parking, the covered parking area. Or if it's just, uh, you know, it's a kind of canopy over a surface parking lot. Um, I mean, how the amount of stormwater runoff is calculated, there's a out basically that says, um, you know, you're essentially already counting the, the parking lot's surface as impervious surface, assuming it's not some kind of, you know,
Right.
special pavement or whatever. Um, so, you know, it's a, doesn't matter. You've got surface and surface.
Right, you're not, you're not changing anything. There's
Yeah, not changing anything. Exactly.
There's no net change.
Yep, yep.
But it's just that the, the we're, we're focusing on the stormwater as well as the regulation for location. And, um, I, I could see lots in the center of town with solar collectors on them. If, if, you know, the economics ever came to that.
Yeah, and they could be, as long as they don't exceed the half the square, half the square footage of the building footprint of the principal structure, you could have them. So they already cover it to some degree, but yeah, it we may want to tweak it to allow, you know, covering the whole parking lot or something, you know, more than one-half the square footage. So we could have like an out or something for that.
There, there, there are so, so many shopping center-like structures, uh, surrounding the town center that have way more surface area of parking lot than they do, uh, building.
Yep, exactly. Yeah.
You'd hit that, that ratio really quick. But that, that's, that's really my only comments. Thank you.
Chuck Anderson, sir. Thank you, Joe. Other questions, comments from commission members?
Uh, Chuck, Fred Russo?
Fred.
Uh, just, just clarification. Maybe Harry can give it to me. Um, he, he mentioned that, uh, it would be half the, the, the solar panels would occupy half the footprint of, uh, of a building. Is that correct, Harry?
Um, if you're up to half this, the footprint of the building, then you're a small-scale, um, ground-mounted solar array, and that's already allowed. So once you get over the half the area, the footprint of the principal structure, that's the limit right now. That would become a large-scale solar array, and then you would need to fall into this new category.
Well, is it, is it, uh, and this is kind of where I was thinking. You could have a building that has a footprint, and I'm just going to use an arbitrary number, fifty by a hundred. It's a one-story building, it may qualify for being the small array. But then you have a three-story building that has the same exact footprint. So you have more, um, square footage in the building. And you've only allowed the same amount of coverage for solar, assuming, I'm assuming that someone's going to use in that building, and if not used, it's put back out to the grid. So it would just seem to me kind of inflexible that it doesn't take into consideration how many square feet it's covering. The footprint is, it doesn't give you the most accurate, um, indication of, of how much solar would be needed or could be, might be required to, to make it worthwhile for, uh, a project to be put up like that. And so that was my question. I don't have a, a pro or con opinion, but I'm just thinking to myself, if, if, if you go by the footprint only, uh, the foot, footprint itself does not give you really an accurate indication of what is being serviced. Because a three-story building would need, need more, but it's only going to get the same amount of solar panels. It doesn't, it doesn't have a larger footprint than the, the one-story building. So that was, I don't know where it all goes, but I was, the question I had in my mind.
Yeah, I mean, that's, it is arbitrary. I mean, I think that's just where, um, when this was worked up originally, we drew the line between what's an accessory use. Now that, of course, wouldn't, you know, the Now that, of course, wouldn't, you know, the the whole roof area, as much as it's, you know, exposed and workable. Could be covered by solar panels.
Right.
So you could have, you know, the whole roof plus. Any area, half the footprint of the building out, you know. So you can have both um, without it being a large scale solar array.
Okay.
But that is, that is the limit at the moment, yeah. And, you know, as things went on, you know, go on here. I think, you know, hopefully we'll all learn from what other communities do, what we experience, and you know, this will probably need to be revisited. I would imagine to tweak it.
The uh, technology gets better, uh, less maybe more, better than more.
Less could be more, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Chuck Anderson, thank you, Fred. Any other questions, comments from commission members? Harry, did you want to uh, go through the guidance document at all, or?
Yeah, let me um. I'd like to just walk everyone through. The document. I, before I do that, though, I mean, I have not reviewed this particular document with the town engineer yet. It's largely based on. The uh, the twenty twenty, January twenty twenty guidance document he's seen. But there's some additional provisions um, that he has not seen. So I think I'd like to do that. Um, and I would also like to look at the regulatory divisions, and I want to walk you guys through them so you understand what we're sort of up against here. And come up with some language so it's clear. The reference to this document is just to the. Design and construction requirements and. You know, the methodology of identifying the wetlands, using soil scientists, a whole bunch of things in here. Not to any of the regulatory process requirements. So let me just walk through this quickly and, you know, there's this um. To point out, I mean, the general document here, and I'll go right to the end, just so you see the cover of it. There's a, there's a, like, I think it's about a hundred page document. And this is the general permit for discharge of stormwater, de-watering, waste waters with destruction activity. So this is a. Effective twelve thirty one twenty twenty, I believe it's the last revision. My understanding from D E P staff, so. There's several appendices, you can see all different topics they cover. This is stormwater management, solar array, construction projects. It's really targeted at larger scale projects. And I think my understanding is to be the guidance for those. Um, solar array installations that are regulated by the Connecticut City Council that generate. One megawatt more, though it could apply for, you know, projects under that too, but it's really aimed at big projects. But, you know, as I mentioned, that category that we're defining here could get big, so. So going back. Um, that's the reference. And you can see, um, you know, already we're talking about. This sort of citing all the parameters they're trying to deal with here. And these are the requirements, so. A lot of this is what is considered effective impervious cover. Um, this is a statement of that. So how the stormwater volume is calculated is the focus of a lot of this first section. Um, and here's where you get into the grade thing. Um, so you've got the roadways, gravel services, transfer floor pads, all impervious. In addition to that. Solar panels would be also considered effective impervious cover for the purposes calculated in the. The amount of stormwater runoff, what a quality volume coming off. The project, if the proposed construction slopes are equal to or greater than fifteen percent. Or if the slopes are less than fifteen percent. And these um, design criteria requirements A through D here are not met, so. In order to get the break, essentially designing the stormwater runoff volume at the reduced level. It would be if the panels are not considered impervious, which means that. All the water runs off. Um, typically in a ground setting. Grass slope, there's a certain amount of water is going to infiltrate, considered to be infiltrating, a certain amount will run off. For veggie, other vegetative slopes, there's different calculations for the amount that's going to run off, the amount that's going to go in to the ground. The assumption here is that. If you don't design all, you know, meet all these design parameters, then you're going to have to calculate the stormwater runoff as if it's all running off. That it's not just running off the panel and hitting the ground and then. You know, going into the ground a little bit. So here are the parameters, so the vegetative receiving area, um. So it's the area between the row is equal to or greater than the average width of the rows, solar panels draining to that vegetated area. So you got to spray space them out enough. Overall site conditions, solar pan configuration are designed such that you have what's called sheet flow, it's just an even amount of runoff over an area of land. It's not going to be sort of forced into gullies and channels and ravines. It's going to be even over the site. Towards whatever control you're going to, you know, put in place at the end of the uh. The geographic extent of the project, um. And then for post-construction slopes, you've got different requirements here for. Um, as you get steeper, you've got to basically do more um, between five to ten percent. You've got to put in things like level spreaders to. Regulate the amount that's terraces and burns to control. And check what's going down a slope. Again, I'm just going to put a caveat. I'm not doing this. I am not a professional engineer. Um, you know, I I did have an engineering degree, so I know a little bit about this, but I want to review this with a town engineer to get a qualified professional take on this, but. This is just reading it, my take on it. Uh, as you're going up to eight percent slopes above erosion control blankets. Um, grinding down slopes, different requirements here. And this is about really how to manage construction, so you're minimizing solid erosion control and soul erosion. You may, excuse me, uh, managing the runoff and the um, sedimentation occurring offsite. Um, and then we're talking about slopes that are greater here, or add in specific, excuse me, specific engineered. Stormwater management controls. Uh, provide permanent stabilization, non-erusive conveyance runoff. So. The requirements intensify as you get steeper slopes. Um, again, another requirement D here that was referred to, I think, by Mr. Rabin is. Um, allow the growth of native vegetation beneath and between the panels. Encouraging pollinator friendly vegetation. Um, and prohibiting the use of chemical fertilization herbicides and pesticides. And here in number two, with some requirements that are just going to apply anyway. Um, and these are setback and buffer requirements. Um, this is the hundred foot setback from any wetland or water course. Um. Where that wetland or water course is located down gradient of the construction activity. Um, or within fifty feet of the property boundary. And then this is a requirement for an undisturbed buffer of fifty feet between construction activity and any wetland, blah, blah, blah. Such buffer. Your vegetation requirement. Um, here's another buffer requirement, ten feet between. Construction activity with an access road, electric connection, blah, 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 goes through here. Um. Again, I am not an expert on the rationale for these things. My thought in referring to this document is. Here's guidance adopted by a state agency that's charged with regulating these activities. Here's the standard. And if an applicant comes in and wants to deviate from that, so they can present their case to the commission, we're going to have a town to review it and consider that, but. These are the standards that have been promulgated that are out there. Um. There is this provision for basically backing off. Um. By up to fifty percent from the hundred foot buffer requirement. Um. As long as all the following have been demonstrated, again, you have satisfaction commissioner approval, you know. We need to look at some of the regulatory processes here that should really be satisfaction of the commission. So I have to. Co with some worry to deal with that kind of thing, um. This is the, as Mr. Rabin mentioned, um. Requirement to reduce the tolls, the sediment load by ninety percent. Before uh, waters received by a wetland or water course. Um. Get some caveats here and how to use, how to calculate that. Um. And for portions of the solar array that. Whose stormwater is going to eventually end up being received by a well in our water course. Um, you would need to calculate that as an effective impervious cover, so that. Says you're going to have a smaller buffer, but you've got to. Basically assume the volume running off from. The solar array is going to be larger. So you'd have to count for that. And this is discussion about the buffer should have a slope less than or equal to fifteen, so it would limit the slope of the buffer. Um, this is a requirement for soil scientists with delineate the wetlands. That's typically what happens in town. Um, that's a requirement. Uh, they're identified by soil type in Connecticut. Um, it's required for measuring the hundred foot setback. How to do that. Um. Between the solar array and these different features. Um. And now you're getting here. Commission may determine, you know, this would need to be. Up to the commission, or we need to, you know. Pick and choose what parts of this are referred to, essentially. Um. And whether wetlands, all these are defined by the general permit, or you want to defer to how. All these things are defined by the inland wetland regulations, might be appropriate for the town rather than. Looking at how the state does it for this process. Um. This section three here limits the vertical clearance to be no greater than ten feet. Um. What I understand is to be getting at is the higher you take the panels up. There's going to be more of a, a potential for um, the water coming down to. Um, pound into the ground and scour and create. Um. Erosion and. Impact vegetation. And if you do go higher, then you've got to deal with non-vegetative control measures to prevent erosion and scour along the drip line. Um, again, here, exception for solar carports that are over asphalt pavement, so. Um. Again, here we got some regulatory requirements, pre-construction meeting by the permittee, so that's not really applicable. Um. This is a requirement for the permittee. To retain a qualified professional and qualified inspector. Uh. Whether we want some alternative language here, I don't know. Something I like to discuss with the town engineer. Um. These are inspection requirements, so is this applicable, appropriate? Um, not really sure. Um. Again, this is another, you know, process requirement here. Timeframe for inspections and so forth. Certainly they'll want, you know, the reference to D E P personnel and so forth. Um. Another reference out to require with the general permit. You know, another inspection checklist, call out. Um. Ditto here for six. Uh, this notice of termination, final stabilization. Um, the letter of credit maintenance. Um. You know, all of this probably is not appropriate, so. Uh, this whole process that would probably be problematic with the requirements in our existing zoning regs for. A financial guarantee and how to release it. Um. And here finally, here are some more design requirements for post-construction management measures. Um, and we're talking about how to. Um. Calculate out and deal with uh, different stormwater as you're going up to the frequency of stormwater, uh, the severity of stormwater event. One in a hundred year, twenty four hour event. Um. And this is technically, I would need to review frankly with the town engineer. Um. It's just a little graphic on. Showing what they're talking about and having this dimension between the panels be the same, you know, as the panel width itself. And, you know, another. Example of, you know, having an energy dissipator here, when you're talking about a steeper slope. To make sure you're dealing with, you know, as the water comes down, it's going to accelerate as you get a steeper slope, create more problems. So that. As far as I understand it, is appendix I. Um. And I, what I did not do was show you which parts of that are new, which parts of that are existing. And I could do that, but maybe that's better done at a follow up meeting. Once I've got some more input from the town engineer, um, so frankly, I'd recommend at this point that. You continue the public hearing to the December eighth meeting, and I can get some input from the town engineer.
Chuck Anderson, thank you, Harry. Any, uh, what we'll do is we'll open up to the public, sounds like we will be continuing this, but any questions from anyone before we open up to the public? Any from commission members or staff? Very none, then. Let's open up to the public with the understanding again that we're likely to continue this. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this item? Evan, do you see anyone?
Do not see anyone at this time.
Okay. So is that okay, Mr. Raven, that we continue this public hearing? You good with that?
Yes, absolutely. And I think uh, what what Mr. Smith points out is the need to uh. To make the, the, our regulations consistent with the Branford. Other, other Branford regulations is is important, so um, I think that we can. Work on that offline and come back to the commission with a, with a more polished product next time.
Right, okay. Thank you, Mr. Raven. Harry, anything else?
No, thank you.
Great, okay, we'll continue this item then. Item number two, the uh. Amendment to section six point eight for alternative energy, allow large solar ground mounted arrays. This item is being continued to our December eighth. Meeting, again, a remote meeting uh, like this one. That brings into item number three, which is eleven seventy one Main Street LLC care of attorney Tim Lee. Uh, PDD modification and it changes to allow uses in this PDD. Uh, Mr. Lee, are you ready to proceed?
I am, thank you. Um, good evening, everybody. For the record, my name is Tim Lee. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Fasino, Belito Lee in Florida, team with an office in Branford and New Haven. Uh, I'm here tonight on behalf of Big Leati Construction, um, who are, who is the owner of the Valley Court Complex. In two thousand nine, two thousand ten, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved a planned development district for Valley Court. As part of the planned development district, there were sixty two residential dwelling units, and there was thirty seven hundred square feet. Of commercial space. I believe the commercial space had been operated by Massimo and uh. Who was on the commission app, not here tonight. Uh, anyway, he vacated, moved across the street, and the space has been empty since then. The big Leatties have identified a potential tenant uh, for the location who is a spa. We approached the town regarding the use, the town looked up the history of the PDD. And as it turns out, when the PDD was approved in two thousand nine, two thousand and ten, there was no identification or list. Of the commercial uses that were permitted in the PDD. Uh, it's simply, the the map simply references the use as retail. So the purpose of our application tonight is to amend the PDD to increase the number of uses. That could be allowed within the commercial space there. So under our proposal, we're allowing, we're proposing retail, which currently exists. Medical office, business office, and personal services, nail salons, um, beauty salons. Uh, personal services, things like that. So we're asking that the PDD be modified to. Increase the number of permitted uses in the uh, commercial component of the project.
Uh, Chuck Anderson, thank you, Mr. Lee. Uh, Evan, did you do the staff report for this one?
Uh, I did, and like Mr. Lee uh, described for us, uh, when the original PDD was established. Um, it simply had a reference to retail as being the permitted uses. Uh, today they're hoping to add uh, three uses on top of that, those being medical offices, business office. Uh, and personal services with examples of a nail salon and a salon, et cetera. Um, this was referred to uh, Connecticut Department of Environment of Energy. Uh, Connecticut Department of Enviro- of Energy and Environmental Protection, uh, they stated that it is consistent with the uh coastal area management act. Um, there are no specific references in our uh plan of conservation and development or our comprehensive plan. Um. I think I did want to call uh clarify. Uh, and I believe Mr. Lee is uh comfortable with this, but um. Having these uses established um in this district will still require. A tenant fit up form to be submitted to the town. Um, and a a brief inspection by planning zoning and and the fire departments to go along with that. Uh, staff does not have any concerns about the proposed PDD amendment. Um, and. Should the commission decide to approve the zoning regulation amendment, any motion? Uh, should include a statement that the commission both considered the plan of conservation development and finds that the amendment is in accordance with the comprehensive plan. Uh, as well as an effective date should be picked, uh. Uh, that precedes the effective date.
Chuck Anderson, thank you, Evan. Uh, any questions from commission members or staff before we open up the public?
Um, Harry Smith, town planner, uh, just to add, um. The master plan amendment process requires uh internal uh referrals to the fire marshal. Um, the town engineer, uh. The police department, board of police commissioners. Um, as well as the shore health district, the town sanitary. Um, so those referrals were made. I did receive uh three return. A. Piece of correspondence, one from the town engineers stating they know had no comments or concerns. Um. Similarly, a response from the Branford Fire Department said they see no issue with the new proposal as relates to the fire department. And a no comment email from the police department. I did not receive anything me sure health department, um, but any proposed tenant use would need to go through the usual. Process of uh, you know, approval connection, if there's any concerns with a. Fine of sewer generator, the town, um, you know, storm or sanitary sewer system. And otherwise, there's really no involvement by the town sanitarian.
Right. Chuck Anderson, thank you, Gary. Any other questions, comments from anyone before we open up the public? Very none, let's open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to comment? Evan, you see anyone?
Uh, no, but I'd just like to reiterate that down at the bottom of your screen, there's a reactions button, you can select raise your hand there, or you can indicate in the chat that you'd like to comment. I do not see anyone at this time.
Great. Okay, so then I guess we can close the public portion. Mr. Lee, do you have any further comments?
No comments, thank you for the time.
Great. Any questions, comments, further comments by commission members or staff? But then we can close this matter as a public hearing, and this is something I think we can take up uh after we complete our public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings into item number four, which is markdowns applicant owner seventy two Sunset Sunset Beach Road, a special exception for grading. Section six point eight without a hundred feet of a critical coastal resource. And a coastal management application for a single family home. Is the applicant ready to proceed with that one?
Uh, good evening, um, Mr. Chairman, uh, Jim Preddy, Chris Callum Engineering, four twenty East Main Street, Branford. Uh, representing the towns in this project, um. I will hopefully share my screen. Um, so this is the uh property at seventy two Sunset Beach. Uh, there's an existing house and detached garage currently. Uh, what they want to do is raise the house up. Uh, to the first floor to elevation fifteen. Um, a small family room addition on this end. And some deck improvements and then a little balcony on. On the on the uh north side of the house. All this um. Uh, conforms to. Um, bulk standards with with part two coverage setback, et cetera. Uh, we're not exceeding the height. Uh, but because this is um. Uh, this is a water over here, they have small dock and there's a. Bit of a wall here. Um, because of the proximity of mean high water. And the excavation for the, you know, for the addition. Um, we're here asking for a special exception for grading within a hundred feet of the coastal resource. Um. Well, tied to wetlands. In this case. And um. And also the uh cam. Uh, I also have. Just so you kind of get a sense for. So this is what the house looks like now. Uh, they are raising it up and then and then modifying roof line. Um, so this is what the the house will look like. Uh. In the. You know, uh, final stages, uh, it will not only, you know, bring them up to FEMA compliance, but will also give them. Um, like a parking and storage area underneath usable space underneath that first floor that. Um. Again, has to meet the coastal construction standard, but. Um, you know, gives you a place to store. Outdoor furniture, kayaks, et cetera.
Chuck Anderson, thank you, Mr. Preddy. Evan, I think you did the staff report on this one as well.
Um, I did, like Mr. Pretty described for us, uh, the activity consists of raising a single family home. Uh, with one addition, I believe two decks, one in the rear, one in the front. Uh, the applicant meets the bulk requirements for the R three district. Uh, no landscaping plan had been submitted. They meet the street parking require or the off-street parking requirements. Uh, no lighting put uh information was provided, however, we added a condition uh to ensure that any proposed lighting would be compliant with section six point seven. Um. They had added erosion control measures to the site plan, but they did not provide an erosion incentive and control plan. Um. And I did not see a. Um. A uh. Uh. Geez, I'm sorry. Uh, a. Uh, stockpile area, oof. Um. And the commission would need to find that the measures proposed, to the extent that they are alternatives from the Connecticut deep two thousand two guidelines are acceptable. And based on the application materials, uh, they satisfy the special exception criteria from section nine point eight F. Uh, they also satisfy the coastal site plan criteria of section nine point seven. Uh, staff recommends two conditions, one that erosion control measures are installed to the satisfaction of the zoning enforcement officer. Um, and maintained throughout construction and lighting has to be consistent with section six point seven.
Chuck Anderson, thank you, Evan. Mr. Pretty, do we need a stockpile area? Is there any uh excavation going on or?
Uh, there's really minimal excavation, um. And there's. So I don't, I don't think they're going to have like an excess of um. You know, soil materials and and the material and the, you know, building materials would be. Most likely stored on the driveway, you know, the street side of the building anyway. So I don't, I don't. I mean, we can add a potential topsoil stockpile area, but I don't think they're really gonna. Uh, have much of that, but we can add that to the drawing.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pretty. Any questions, comments from it from commission members or staff before we open up to the public? Very none, let's open that up to the public. Any member of the com- public wish to comment on this item?
Looks like we do have somebody who phoned in. Oh. Looks like they lowered their hand. Oops, they are back, let's give it a try. We just ask that they uh, once they unmute themselves. Um, to uh state their name, please.
Paul Genusitis, I'm adjoining neighbor at seventy six Sunset Beach.
Thank you. You, do you have any questions or comments?
Uh, yeah, the only comment was you, uh, Evan, thank you very much. You sent me all the plans and I reviewed them with my neighbor who was also. On planning and zoning over in Orange, so he understands this a little bit better than I do. And I I uh, I hope that I understood things. Earth slopes was mentioned, however, I, after it being explained to me, it didn't look like the plans had any. Uh, um, uh, um, interest or changes in the finished grading of the yard itself. My property at seventy six Sunset Beach is adjoining that seventy two, it's the same size lot and both of them are in the coastal flood hazard area. It's the lowest elevation sea, my house is the lowest level elevation sea level in the neighborhood. And both seventy two and seventy six properties several times per year experienced flooding overflow from Bradley Lagoon Lagoon. Um, during high tides and high winds and rain. Though my property takes the brunt of it. So I see no request in these plans to change the finish grade of the yard at seventy two Sunset Beach, and I trust that is the case. If there was um plans to do that, certainly I would object to that, because it might just push more water in my yard. Other than that. You know, I I uh wish Mark and Patty uh the best.
Uh, Chuck Anderson, thank you, sir. Mr. Pretty, are there any change of the grade?
No, there are, there is no plan changes grades on the plan. He's he's correct.
Great, so thank you. Are 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 there other questions or comments from members of the public? Seeing none, then um. Uh, Mr. Pretty, do you uh have any further comments or?
No, uh unless there's any other, um. Um, Jim Preddy, unless there's any other questions from the question, I think uh. Fairly simple project and uh I think we're we're good.
Great. Uh, any questions, comments from uh staff or commission members? Uh, Evan or Harry, do you think we need to add a potential stockpile area or what do you think?
Not if the design professional doesn't feel it's necessary.
Okay. Okay, and Mr. Pretty, you don't think it's necessary, uh?
No, I mean, so, you know, the end result is we're not changing the grades here, so if there is any access, they're gonna have to remove it from the site anyway, so.
Okay. Okay, any other uh comments, questions from commission members or staff? Then uh we we can uh close this matter as a public hearing, and this is something I think we can take up uh after we conclude our public hearings. Thank you, Mr. Pretty.
Thank you.
Uh, brings into item number five, which is four three Elms LLC care of Kurt Whitick. Uh, at four three Elms Road, special exception coastal site plan for further modifications regarding the renovation of a two-family dwelling. Is applicant ready to proceed with that?
Uh, yes, Harry, could you make uh Jeff? Beady. John Cunningham, I think Chuck Mandell is also here from the team. Um. Is that, is there anybody else, Jeff?
Uh, John, uh, Greg Nucci.
How could I forget Greg?
Harry Smith, town planner, I'm working on it, I. So if I this Greg, okay. And so I've got Chuck, Greg. Person just spoke and who's the other person? Uh. John, there is, okay. Okay, should be all set.
Hey, you can now proceed.
Thank you very much, uh, Jeffrey Beatty, uh, Sullivan Griffith and BD LLP in Guilford, seven oh five Boston Post Road. On behalf of the applicant, um, this is our special exception in coastal area management uh approval request for the property at four three Elm Road. In Stony Creek, uh, the project is the conversion of an existing apartment building into a two unit dwelling. Uh, and we believe that the uh. Uh, proposed uh application complies with. All the uh zoning regulations and the variances previously granted by the zoning board of appeals with regard to this property. And I'm going to turn it over to uh Mr. Mandell to walk you through the particulars of the uh. Dimensions of the project and the size and and then we'll have Mr. Nucci speak as to the design elements. And then Mr. Cunningham is available to address any uh landscape uh questions that the commission may have.
Good evening. Chuck Mandell, agent for the applicant. Um, this commission has seen this plan uh several times over the. Over the years, um. In regards to CAM, we uh satisfy all uh elements of uh CAM regulations, and in fact, we are enhancing the uh area. Um, we are reducing uh the the uh gravel parking uh to the northwest where. Uh, that was adjacent to the post office, people who want to be familiar uh with the site. Uh, that's going to be turned totally into lawn, that's going to be lawn and landscape, and John Cunningham can go over the landscape plan in a greater detail. Uh, the building itself is going from four units to two units. Um, it's substantially the same, uh, it haven't changed the size of the actual structure itself. Um, there will be two uh garages added uh to the west of the building. And those will also be on gravel parking, so the stormwater mitigation will be. Um, through an eight inch. Gravel uh for stormwater mitigation for the uh. For the uh. In increase in the runoff or the uh, the roof water. Um. The grading is essentially, uh, as you see it today, there are a couple of stockpile areas there, we're moving one stockpile area during construction. Uh, there's a stone pile uh to the north, uh, north of the proposed garages, and there's a fill pile now onsite. Uh, it's been there for a while, so it's actually stabilized. There's quite a bit of heavy vegetation. Um, on the stockpile itself, uh, we do have silt fence in place around. I'll wait for Evan to share the screen. Okay, so, yeah, so the uh second, the northern silt fence line is already there, we're proposing a secondary silt fence layer during construction. Um, this area as it stands now, except for the existing stone pile to be removed. Um, is right now it's heavily vegetated with weeds, and that will all be replaced, um, so there is no erosion. That's actually uh enhancing, uh, like I said, the uh sensitive area. That retaining wall that you see to the northwest, that's actually a um. Almost like a sluice way for drainage, uh, so that will also be unchanged and uh. Further protections on it. The existing septic system uh had been uh. Reused by the state, that's already been approved, we're going to reroute some of the piping to incorporate uh the two garages. And I believe that's fairly it, like I said, the grading that you see now is uh onsite is really gonna, not gonna change that much, so. I think John Cunningham uh can go over the landscape plan, I think that would give you a lot of greater insight as to what this will look like as a finished product. You're on mute, John.
He's actually unmuted now, but I still can't hear him.
Right, I can't hear you either.
Yeah, maybe try uh. Taking the AirPods out and that might activate your computer microphone, just a, just an idea.
Can anyone hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, sorry, I was playing around with it before I came back on. Um. I I apologize. I'm not a great computer guy. Uh, Evan, thank you, if you could throw my plan up. Uh, once again, uh, John Cunningham, owner of T E C Landscape Design located at sixty two Wall Street in Madison. Um. The plan before you. Is basically about the same plan, I was checking my records. Our first approval or the first plan that came through the Bradford. Planning and zoning commission was on uh. The end of October in two thousand twenty. The wetland portion of the project, which is out back. Was approved, it has not changed. Uh, since that plan, okay? The building itself has changed a little bit, and we've changed some of the landscape around the building. Along with moving the parking, which was on. I guess the west side. Over to the east side. Um. What's new on the plan? Um. The garages have been here since we've been back on the board. Uh, we've deleted the. Shed out back. The tree that was um mistakenly not labeled on one of my original plans. This is the tree that was removed. But was on the first set of plans, uh, it's a replacement tree that was shown, it's in the town staff records. Uh, we're we're suggesting or proposing it three and a half to four inch caliber, single stem red bud. Be a nice variety down here, um. Is really considered more of an ornamental tree than a shade tree. I think it would give a lot more. Softening to the area than a shade tree, uh, that's one reason why I recommended it. We also added some additional planning along this eastern side of the property. It's ten feet from the property line to the edge of the driveway. Uh, I did read another comment on the staff letter. Uh, all the material or plant material on this plan is all native. It's all on the the D E E P website, you can. Check that out to see that all the material that we've suggested is also on their master list of what to use on these on these types of areas. One small change from the our last presentation is on unit one. My slash line is a wood deck that comes off. My slash line is a wood deck that comes off of both units, but you can see now unit one has a at-grade bluestone patio. Um, I don't have the elevations on my plan. Chuck, we go back to Tom Stevens' plan to get, gain that. But that's the one change from our last go-around. There is still a buffer planting that runs down along this west side. This is an evergreen hedge. This is the back of that sluice way that, uh, Chuck mentioned. And this is the post office. It's right here where my cursor is. The remainder of the area is all lawn area out back. Um, I think it'll be a really nice addition to that area of Stony Creek. I've done a bunch of work down there. Um. Our lighting plan, I think I'll let, uh, Mr. Nucci go over. It's all, um, uh, night sky compliant or dark sky compliant. So everything's a full cutoff fixture. It's very low key. We're just illuminating the parking area, getting to the residential units is not a lot of other light, uh, that's on here. I think that's about it. Um. If there are any questions now, you can gladly ask me or you can wait until the end of the presentation to go through, back through them.
Good evening, everybody. My name is, is Greg Nucci. I am an architect that is, uh, been hired to help, uh, design this project for, uh, for Kurt. Um, can I share my screen, please?
Uh, yes, I think you should have permission.
All right, good. Can everybody see it?
Yes.
You never know. So what you see before you, uh, are the new floor plans proposed for that building. If you're familiar with the building, it's, it's, it's there now and I really, when I said, status. Um, we are, as, uh, previously said, we're converting a multi-unit project into just two units. Um, so if this is, um, four, three elves road, we have an entrance drive into a gravel parking lot. Each unit gets a two-car, one-story garage. Um, and you can see by the divider, that's really the division line between each unit, main level. You know, is, is, uh, living room, dining, kitchen, bedrooms, and then we have subsequent bedrooms on the upper level. Um, going to the second floor and into the loft area as well. Um, you can see this is a roof plan, but I'll just move right to the the building elevations. Uh, these are the building elevations of the proposed project. Um, you can see the two entrances, uh, the east elevation, um, from the entry court, looking back at how each unit is entered. Um, this view here is the proposed elevation from, uh, the water side. Um, so you see we've got, uh, the deck area and the deck areas and balconies above. Um, on the proposed south elevation, uh, this is the, the view from four, three elves road. Uh, it's kind of the street view where you come into the parking court. We have the two garages. The entrances are on the side and this, you're probably familiar with that massing uh, of that building is, is the same as it is now. It's just been articulated with new windows and new siding and trim details and things like that nature. Um, and then from the backyard or the, the wetland side looking back, these are the, the backs of the garages. And the, um, the back elevation showing the porches and the proposed decks that, um, that we are proposing. And then these are, uh, we've got two renderings when we were meeting with the Stony Creek Re- Review, uh, Committee, um, which they gave us a five, I guess, five to nothing favorable. Um, recommendation, uh, for the project. Um, but we were showing them these when we were discussing, uh, building materials. And so this is kind of a view of that entry courtyard with one of the garages and the two entrances into each unit. And then from the, looking up four, three elves road, this is the backside, uh, rendering that shows, um, the division kind of divider fence here with unit one and unit two on the other side. And the proposed depth off of unit one, smaller off of unit two, and then, um, stairs down to an existing or the bluestone patio that, uh, John Cunningham had just, uh, explained at grade. And there is also, um, a little, um, there's currently, there, it's a very narrow street, so there's some landscaping proposed along this wall. And, um, all the, um, railings here are a cable rail system. Um, these are the boards that we presented to, um, to the Stony Creek folks, just to show what the lighting, um, would look like. We've got some, some small baller lighting just at the entrances, just to light the surface of the walkways. Uh, we've got some kind of foyer lighting within the, uh, underside of, uh, the existing building. And then on the underside of the, uh, cable rail, uh, fence, we've got a little light fixture that just kind of lights the surface of the deck. Um, and there's also, um, a stone wall light, which is, you can see the end of the stone wall. And on the opposite side is just to shine down on the driveway as you're walking into the, uh, or driving into the, um, gravel court. That is, uh, the presentation for the project. Um, I believe that can concludes our presentation. All I can say that there, you know, this project's been, um, talked about for a long period of time and, and the current owners really wanna kind of help the situation and come in and, and do a really nice project for the community. And I think what we've got here i- is just that. So, um, with that, I'll open it up to staff comments and.
Uh, Chuck Anderson, thank you, Mr. Nucci. Thank you, uh, Mr. Beauty and the rest of the team. Uh, Evan, did you prepare the staff report on this one?
Uh, I did, and I'd like to start by saying, uh, the applicant did quite a good job on addressing, uh, all the concerns I had in my staff report. Um, so if I do go over something tonight that they did in fact mitigate on the plans that they submitted earlier this week, I do apologize. Um, they are here before us to modify previous special exception approval, um, along with, uh, some, uh, or a handful of changes around the site. Uh, these changes include a reduction in the number of units from four to two, to, to detached garages to be added. A thirteen-hundred square foot deck, a screened-in porch, three second-story balconies, two, two third-story decks. Uh, rearrangement of the proposed landscaping and a relocation of the parking lot to the eastern side of the property. Uh, they meet the requirements of the R two district. Um, Mr. Cunningham went over the landscaping plan for us. Uh, he did include the, uh, tree that was removed, uh, that was marked to remain on the previous site plan approval. Um, I believe he also did touch upon the, uh, D E P approved, uh, plantings to go in the buffer area at the rear of the property. Um, I'd like to take a look at, um, that list of, uh, of, uh, species that he had referenced, um, and maybe circulate that to the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, for the next meeting. Um, the applicant satisfies the off-street parking requirements, um, uh, no lighting plan had been submitted. However, we can add a condition that would, uh, require all proposed lighting to meet the requirements in section six point seven. Um, they did not include a soil erosion and control plan. However, they did add, uh, erosion control measures to the plan. And even with the, uh, the mo- the latest submission included, um, two sets of, uh, uh, silt fencing to be proposed. Um, uh, previous approval had required, uh, complete erosion and soil con- control plan, addressing all the requirements of six point eight and six ten. Um, they did, uh, show us on that new plan, um, uh, the existing grades, and I think there is some pro- proposed regrading, uh, around the garage. Um, I would like some clarification on, on maybe having a little bit of a clear, what is existing grade? What is proposed grade? Uh, I'd like to work with the applicant, maybe meet with them. Um, um, and I think I spotted two very, very minor non-compliant grading, um, on two different parts of the property. But, uh, to be transparent, I was using my, uh, PDF reader measuring tool, which is most likely not as scientific at whichever program that Chuck and Tony had used, uh, to design the grades. Um, so maybe they can clarify that for me and I, I may potentially be wrong in that observation. Um, there was no stockpile added. However, there were some notes, um, indicating where stockpiling would take place uh, on that newest submission. Um, and I think as the previous applicant had, uh, their design professional had testi- testified that, uh, the stockpile area may not be needed, but if it is, uh, we can maybe, um, just mark off the area that it will take place, uh, so that zoning enforcement officer can be able to, uh, enforce where that stockpile is limited to. Um, I believe, uh, Mr. Mandel had commented on the drainage, uh, information. Um, I would like to review it and send it maybe to the town engineer for comment. Um, and again, hopefully we can meet sometime before the next meeting and pin down everything and, and clarify it all for me. Um, stormwater management plan is not required for this application per section six point nine C one. However, six point nine C two states that the commission can require it, uh, if it is necessary to protect the public health, safety and welfare, uh, of the, of the town of Branford. Previous approvals had required, uh, demonstration of measures taken to address stormwater management. Meaning a proposed swell on the eastern property line. However, I, I think I remember Mr. Mandel talking about, uh, one being on the opposite side of the property line. Um, uh, they had already incorporated erosion control measures into the site plan. Uh, however, in the past, the si- the silt fencing has fallen over and it caused uh, sediment to accumulate around the property. Um, and I would like to mention that previous approvals had required that, um, the applicant shall provide monthly progress reports, uh, to the zoning enforcement officer who may reinstitute, reinstitute it as may be necessary. Um, section six twelve C of our zoning regulations, uh, requires that, uh, there are twenty-five-foot site triangles uh, at any intersection and driveway. Um, just like to share my screen for a moment. Uh, the applicant did add, um, this note down here showing a visibility triangle. I believe that's how, uh, the state of Connecticut regulates that stuff. Um, that is not how the town of Branford, um, uh, regulates its site triangle information. However, uh, I believe it could be as easy as, uh, Mr. Come- Cunningham describing that all the vegetation within the twenty-five-foot area that's actually measured from the intersection up twenty-five feet this way. And then up twenty-five feet along the road and then it constitutes an area between those two twenty-five-foot measurements. Uh, so there are two different site triangles for, for every intersection. Um, but we would just need some clarification from Mr. Cunningham that those plants, uh, would be at a, a height that would not, um, block any, uh, vision of motorists that are pulling in and are, in or out of the intersection or driveway. Um, they satisfy the requirements of section seven eighteen, uh, as well as the criteria for the coastal site plan review from section nine point seven. Uh, with the exception of, uh, description of the proposed measure to mitigate adverse effects on coastal resources. However, I think that, um, with this newest submission, they may have, um, demonstrated that this is complete. Uh, we can clarify that before the next meeting, uh, with that list of, uh, vegetation that Mr. Cunningham said is compliant with, um, uh, the state's list of species that are appropriate for that. And the general, and the special exception criteria are generally satisfied, uh, with the exception that item number four is potentially not satisfied. And that item reads that the location, nature and height of buildings, walls and fences, and the nature of the extent of plant activities and landscaping on the site must be such that the use will not hinder or discourage the appropriate development and use of adjacent land and buildings or impair the value thereof. Uh, finally, they appear before the Stony Creek Board on November second and received a positive recommendation. Um, and staff recommends that the public hearing be continued to allow additional information to be submitted by the applicant in response to these comments. However, like I said before, the applicant answered the majority of my comments, uh, from my original staff report. Um, so I do apologize if I, uh, commented on anything that they did, uh, already include.
Chuck Anderson, thank you, Evan. Um, and i- am I correct that you're, you still recommend that the hearing be continued? You did mention a few items about the grading questions and a maybe town engineer looking drainage, site triangle, and getting the native tree species. So are, is, are you still recommending that this public hearing be continued?
I do. I think it would be appropriate just in case there's any comments from the town engineer that the applicant might need to comment on. Or, or you'll need to clarify. Um, and yes, I'd still recommend it.
Um, okay, thank you. Um, questions, comments from commission members or staff before we open up to the public?
Hi, I have a question. It's Marcy.
Marcy, please.
Yeah, I might have missed it. Um, I, I do want to commend the team with their presentation. They did an excellent job. It's very articulate and clear. I just wanted to better understand. I noticed there's about six bedrooms per unit. It just wasn't clear what the use of how they were, whether they were selling them as individual units, as it's single families, or were they gonna rent them? It just seems like a lot of bedrooms for a two-car parking garage. And I was, just was a little concerned about the traffic or overflow parking in that gravel area. So that's, that's really where my question is stemming from is the, how the building is gonna be used or how ownership's gonna be tamed, be retained. Thank you.
Uh, Chuck, Mr. Beauty, or do you, one of your team want to address that?
Uh, sure. I, I, we've got the, uh, owners here. The plan is to sell the units, uh, I believe is two condominium, uh, two, two-unit condominiums or two, uh, two separate dwellings. Uh, Mr. Nucci can identify the number of bedrooms in each of the, each of the units, but that's the, the parking, uh, garages and the driveway were built or developed in the concept that there are two separate units. It, the property was, uh, a multi-unit apartment building, uh, and it's being converted. It's reducing the number of, uh, dwelling units from, uh, at least four to two. Uh, so the idea is the number of bedrooms, I think, in that if I'm not mistaken, are, are five. If that's, uh, not accurate, Mr. Nucci will certainly correct me.
Yes, thanks, Jeff. And I think on the plans, they're, they are labeled as bedrooms, but the, the way things have been working these days and, you know, people are working from home. So, um, the septic system has been designed and installed for a larger capacity than the, the bedroom count. Chuck can speak to that. So, um, although they're labeled as bedrooms on each unit, they are, they could be a home office, you know, somebody working from home two days a week. Like some of my staffs seem to wanna do. Um, so, and it's, and it is a single-family residence. I know there's been a lot of kind of swirling talk about ARBMBs and things of that nature. That is not the intent of this project whatsoever. Um, you know, those are just kind of things that the community was wondering about. So, um, they're very high-end units. You know, they're not. The way they're designed, you can't really rent out a portion of them for, um, for an Airbnb. So, you have to use the same common stare to get to everything. So.
Um, if I may, no, I, I, I think you've done a great job. I just know, you know, I live in a household with, you know, older children who are driving, who have their cars, and I'm just not sure how, if this became that situation, whether it would be feasible to have additional cars other than the two cars allotted per unit. And maybe that's all the zoning required. Whether it would be feasible to have additional cars other than the two cars allotted per unit, and maybe that's all the zoning requires, but. You know, sometimes the real world can push things a little bit and um, you know, six bedrooms.
Yeah, and I.
You know, lend to that if there's large families or, you know, an in-law situation living with them or, you know, what have you.
Let me let me jump in Greg for a minute, so as Greg alluded to uh there, the Connecticut Health Code. Would uh looks at. A certain criteria to call certain things bedrooms, so we've had homeowners come in and they want a a media room, they want a home office. Um, yet the health department will say if it can be made into a bedroom, uh, we're gonna call it a bedroom, so we're kind of forced to call these rooms bedrooms, whether they're. They're not, that I can't answer to, um, we did have this designed for uh eleven bedrooms, I think, I think the original. Uh, proposal had on the eleven bedrooms, it was gonna be five units, sixty six one-bedroom units, uh, they were uh. It was quite extensive on, I think the owners are just trying to fix this ISO up and uh get moving on this project sooner than later. In regards to the uh grading, um, we're in an AE twelve zone, so the we did uh raise the uh. They removed part of the basement, uh, put flood vents in, so the structure, the main structure is totally FEMA compliant now. And in regards to the garages, they're at an elevation twelve plus uh twelve plus one point one or so. So that's why the elevation uh Evan is at twelve. Um, in regards to stormwater management, we do have the stormwater management we're using. And it's very common to use uh the gravel drive for stormwater mitigation. And in regards to the stockpile area, as Evan noted, there is a note. That says, uh, I don't anticipate much grading, uh, it's pretty much done at this point, except for. Topsoiling and getting rid of some of the uh the stone that's there, so most of it's gonna be removal at this point. Um, but we do have air an area for the stockpile area and on the note. It shows uh we're gonna use the driveway area uh during construction. And we can certainly change our our site line plan um to incorporate uh the town of Branford's uh criteria. We did use uh Connecticut DOT criteria for the site line. Thank you.
I I do note that Mr. Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh Kurt Whittick, one of the principals of the LLC that's the applicant, has his hand raised. Some of uh uh Ms. Ms. Paluzzi's questions.
Uh, certainly, so um, uh Evan, can you uh?
Harry Smith Town Planner, I've made Mr. Whittick a co-host, um, so he should be able to unmute it, will now.
You're just to answer the question directly. The 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 units as designed are five-bedroom units. And one of those bedrooms is on the first floor and clearly are thinking is that could possibly be a gentleman office as. As mentioned, but there there are no six-bedroom units proposed, they're proposed as five.
Thank, thank you, uh, Mr. Whittick. Uh, any other questions, comments from commission members before we open up to the public? If not, then let's uh open it.
Last one, I was looking at the last, the landscape plan relative to the sideline. And I was just wondering whatever being was proposing for that hedge.
Uh, John Cunningham, um, taxes hicks eye, uh, be kept at. Probably three feet or below, I checked the sightline from within twelve feet of the property line. So if a car was pulling out. There's lawn in front of the unit, there's an eighteen inch high stone wall and then a thirty to thirty-six inch high. Evergreen hedge. Uh, average sightline from a passenger car is forty-two to forty-eight inches from sight. From eye level, so there'd be plenty of visibility on both directions of the street.
Chuck in share, thank you, Mr. Coming in, any other questions?
You're welcome.
From anyone? If 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 not, then let's uh open up the public, does any member of the public wish to comment? Evan, do you see anyone?
Um, yes, I do see Ms. Chessa would like to comment, but before she gets started, just like to reiterate. Uh, down at the bottom of your screen, the reactions button, you can select that and select raise your hand if you'd like to comment. You can also type into the chat and uh let me know that you'd like to speak and I can uh unmute. All right, Barbara, could you please unmute yourself? Yeah, you're muted still. There you go.
Good evening, everybody, um, thank you for coming here. Um, as everybody knows, or as I think everybody knows, it's been a an overly long process, going back on, I believe, to two thousand sixteen. Um, so we're excited to get moving here and have something built. We do have a couple of questions um relative to um. For the record, I'm Barbara Chessler and I live at eight three on the road and have property, but this property um to the east. Um, we share a property, so we had a couple of questions to begin with, first of all. Um, I think application of the rating is very important to us. Um, right now that property is significantly higher than ours. And we don't want a situation where runoff and the extraordinary large septic system. Affects our property or the title um that. Um, so that's a concern we continue to have. Secondly, um, I have a question, John Cunningham, maybe you can answer this. The utility pole that is currently there. Uh, we can't tell from the drawings, is that still going to be there and what's it gonna be used for?
Barbara, I'm having a real hard time hearing you, but I can tell you right now, the utility pole is not going anywhere.
Okay, so that this will that have lights on it?
That's not a question I could answer.
So the utility pole that's on the the property is gonna retain, is gonna remain, and so what's it used for?
Uh, Chuck, could you?
Chuck, you're muted.
Okay, sorry, I didn't realize.
Can you answer that, Chuck?
Yeah, I was, yeah, I think. Temporary power pole that's on there, that's gonna be removed uh after the construction is done. Yeah, that's not, you're not talking about the one in the street, Barbara, are you?
No, I'm talking about the one that's uh next to our driveway, it's about probably.
Yeah, yeah.
That one.
That's going away.
Yeah, that that's that's only temporary, that's that's gonna be removed once constructions start, uh.
This one over here, the little one, I knew was temporary, I didn't. So that that law, that large utility pole is going away?
No.
No, that's remaining.
Yeah. And for what purpose?
That's uh ever source requirement, that's that was a permanent.
Ever, ever source told us that Mr. Diatri requested it.
Perhaps he wanted that instead of a a underground power just due to the expense. But that will remain. And if there's no light on there now, that from the town, so there there's no light proposed that I that I know of. There is a light across the street which shows in that photo.
Right, right. Okay, but that yeah, that utility pole has to reach to main?
Yes, that will remain.
Okay, um, and then I guess our other questions have to do with the plantings that are gonna go along the property line initially, they were going to be junipers. Now, it it from the last drawing I saw, which might not be that, I could not see the drawing that you showed, John. Um, but the drawings on um, the the plantings on along the property line. And it says something about a retaining wall with a. Split rail fence. Uh, that didn't, wasn't clear to us, it was our understanding also that the maple tree. Had to be replaced, that was along the property line. It was a thirteen inch diameter maple tree.
Uh, the Barbara, the last plan that was presented to town that Evan has that we showed, that we presented tonight. Shows a dry stacked stone wall against the property line. Along with uh winter berry and sweet fern along the eastern edge.
Right, so that's. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, we moved away from the upright juniper when we added the garages to the area.
Why?
Just the choice of plant material, I think the winter berry would be a nice tie into the backwater area. If you really wanted to have an evergreen piece of plant material as opposed to a deciduous piece of plant material. Fine with us, we can make a change, it's really not a big deal.
Okay, well, we'd like to at least discuss that, I mean. Our concern is that, you know, all of a sudden, there's gonna be a lot of cars going in and out of there, and we would like consideration to be given to. Um, you know. Head headlights and car activity in and out of there, we have no interest in looking at that. Um, and you know, and having headlights going into. Into our into our prop, onto our property, into our deck and and kitchen area. Um, so.
Barbara, if you if you look at the site plan, if you look at the garage as proposed to the road. We'd be more than happy to change the winter berry to an evergreen piece of material. And then if we wanted to use some winter berry, because the garage would be a buffer between your house and the parking area. We will move the winter berry back to the other part of the property, that's not a big deal at all, okay? And I can make that, I can make that change with Evan and the town uh after the meeting.
Okay, okay, um, and then our or like I said, our and then our most significant concern is just making sure. That the um Squawbrook Creek and the inland wetlands are protected, we've worked really hard for the last twenty. Protect that area and in terms of runoff and and. You know, uh, we've we've eradicated most of the fragmities and we like to keep it that way, so.
Okay, so are the area at the really north part of the property, Barbara. Uh, nothing has changed since we got approval from the wetland application in two thousand and twenty. It's all remained the same plant material, the same dimensions and all the same notes on all the plans.
Right, but yeah, but prior to this, there weren't two garages, and now all of a sudden, there's two garages, and I don't know enough, I'm not an engineer. Um, but, you know, I just want to be. Make sure that it's on the record that we don't want, you know, we're we're very concerned about runoff from these, from this driveway area and garages.
Yeah, just just for the record, Chuck Mandell here, um, just for clarification, that that is not inland wetlands, it's actually tidal wetlands. So this never really went before the inland wetlands board, um, there were some DEP violations that Mr. Um. Fiatry was involved with and uh we had quite a bit of uh work to do to get this uh corrected. Um, and in fact, to protect the uh the wetlands, the original septic system. It was actually in the groundwater uh north of the existing building, uh, which actually leached right into. Uh, that's the uh that creek behind.
Squad Creek.
So, yeah, squad creek, so the reason that uh system. We brought so that all that fill had to be brought in, number one, it was an allowed an eleven-bedroom system. And it was really uh considered a repair, so we did have to go, we went not only with uh the health district, local health. But we also had to go to the state for approvals, so this system, due to subsurface conditions and the existing ground. The only way we could get uh as as code complying as possible with this system was to bring in a select fill. And if you remember, they bring truckloads and truckloads of select fill, uh, as opposed to the native uh fill, there were uh. There were berry pits in there, all kinds of debris, uh, that was really a terrible situation down. If you were, I'm sure you remember, you were involved, um, and so, yeah, so in regards to protecting uh Squaw Brook. Um, I think this plan is uh miles ahead of the original plan, and I actually, I commend the developer for uh. Allowing us to spend his money to make this plan um way it looks right now, so I. That it was tidal wetlands, uh, and we do had, we had CAM approval, we had a a lot of scrutiny from DEP on this. And uh they agree with the planting plan from John Cunningham, and I think it's. Uh, a very, uh, it's very, very well-done site plan, thank you.
Okay, thank you, I did, um, I based on what you just said too, I mean, if there's any way that that utility pole could be put underground. Very happy, it's just, um, it's really slightly, it's a eyesore, we we look at it. Where we used to be looking at trees, we're now looking at a utility. So from our upstairs bathrooms and bedrooms. So I don't know if that can be considered, but if there's any way to remove that, that would be. Much appreciated, thank you very much, Mr. Commissioner.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chesser. Evan, there's any other members of the public wish to comment?
Uh, just one more time, if you'd like to comment, reaction button down at the bottom of your screen. And uh raise your hand or indicate in the chat that you'd like to participate. I do not see anyone.
Okay, so it looks like we're gonna continue this matter to our December eighth hearing and the applicant's gonna meet with Evan and. There's a number of questions that were reviewed that you can, also the town engineer's gonna look at the drainage issue. So uh, I think that's where we are, does anyone have any comments before we uh continue this meeting? Either the applicant or members of the commission?
This Mr. Chairman Jeff Beatty, if I could just add one more thing. It may be public comment, I did get a visit at my office yesterday from Peter Custer, who's the neighbor of the, who owns the property across the street. Uh, and he submitted a letter to me, which I believe I forwarded uh via email to Evan yesterday. Uh, in support of our application, he owns the property across the street as well as two other properties within the neighborhood. Uh, I sent him three notices uh for each of the entities, and so I just wanted to make the committee aware, the commission aware that. There was a letter in support of the application from directly across the street.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Beatty, and and actually staff did uh circulate a nice handwritten letter uh. From the from the neighbor, so yes, we have received that, so thank you. And anything else, any other further comments, again, we're gonna, before we continue this? Hearing on then, we'll continue this matter to our December eighth meeting and uh. Bring it up again, again, it's a remote meeting, the same uh location, which is online, uh, so. Uh, seven thirty on the, or seven o'clock is when our meeting starts on the on December eighth, so thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so uh, that's item number five, item number six. Uh, I understand that application has been withdrawn, is that correct, um, Evan and Ari?
That is correct.
Okay. So while we take care of the minutes, um. So I think we had a set of minutes, first was the November, our November third, twenty twenty-two minutes that were sent around with the packet. And um, I think. If uh commission members had a chance to review those, if someone wanted to make a motion to approve the or. Change or whatever you like with respect to the November third, twenty twenty-two minutes. Anyone want to make that motion?
Shavak will make that motion.
Okay, Joe Chadwick makes a motion to approve the uh November third, twenty twenty-two minutes as drafted, is there a second? Somebody got a second.
Marcy will second.
Marcy will second, any further discussion, all those in favor, Joe Chadwick, you in favor?
Chadwick is in favor.
Fred, are you in favor?
Fred is in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
Sharon?
Sharon is in favor.
Cher is also in favor, okay, so the November third meeting uh minutes are approved. Also, um, while we're at it, do we want to add to the agenda the approval of the July twenty-one, twenty-two? Ones that was were sent to us this afternoon, if people uh I or earlier. Uh, did did commission members get a chance to look at those, those are ones that we had had uh. Had not approved, the staff wanted to go over that because that was the one, I think, the meeting where we approved. An application that's under appeal and just making sure that looked right, is have people looked at those? The the.
Fred Russo, I I read it today.
Okay, great. So Fred looked at those.
Sharon Hutner here, I read it today as well.
Excellent, okay, well, um, I I've read them as well, they looked okay, just someone wanted to make a mo- motion first to add. To the agenda, the approval of the July twenty-one, twenty-two minutes.
Fred Russo makes that motion.
Motion made by Fred is our second.
Sharon Hutner will second.
Second by Sharon, any further discussion, Joe Chadrick, you favor adding this to the agenda?
Shadow is in favor.
Fred?
Fred is in favor.
Marcy? Marcy is muted.
Marcy's in favor, just couldn't unmute fast enough.
Okay, Sharon, you in favor?
Sharon's in favor.
Okay, great, so it's added to the agenda, if someone wanna make a motion with the, to approve the minutes of the July twenty-one, twenty-two. On the meeting.
Fred Russo is so moved.
Motion made by Fred is our second.
Chadwick seconds.
Second by Joe Chadwick. Any further discussion, all in favor, Joe Chadwick?
Chadwick in favor.
Fred?
Fred Russo in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
Sharon?
Sharon's in favor.
And the chair is also in favor, so those minutes are approved. Uh, any correspondence, Harry?
Harry Smith Town Planner, we have no correspondence tonight.
Okay. With that, let's take up the items, the public hearing items that we can probably uh, act on, so I think uh. Start with item number three, right, that's the uh. Eleven seventy-one Main Street LLC, Tim Lee, this was the P V D. Modification to add the uses. To allow them to, it's, it's like an omission in the original P V D, so this sort of fills in a gap. Uh, Evan, do you wanna um? Pull that one up?
You guys see uh, the word document?
Yes, great. So again, I think this was just to add that the uses uh, that were sort of omitted and, and it's retail, medical. Business offices and personal services. And again, this was uh, the location was uh, where Massimo's former salon was, so those all seem appropriate uses. For that uh, area. Anyone have any thoughts or? Comments on with respect to this? Seems fair, fairly straightforward. If not, then is someone, wanna make a motion to approve this P D D modification? With the finding that it's uh, we find it consistent that we've considered the plan of conservation in development, and we find it consistent with the. With the uh. With the two, with our.
Comprehensive plan.
Comprehensive plan. Uh, and uh. Also uh, with an effective date of whenever, sometime after we publish the notice. Which is when, what do you recommend for an effective date?
Let's, Harry Smith Town Planner, let's say the. The ninth, just to be safe and give ourselves another week in the sound.
Okay, so with an effective date of December ninth, twenty twenty-two, someone wanna make that motion?
Chadwick will make that motion.
Motion made by Joe Chadwick, is there a second?
Sharon Hutner will second.
Second by Sharon, any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe Chadwick?
Chadwick is in favor.
Mr. Russo?
Fred Russo in favor.
Marcy? Is Marcy muted? Did you lose Marcy?
She is still here, I just.
Marcy's in favor.
And Sharon?
Sharon is in favor.
Chair is also in favor, so that uh, amendment is approved. So that's it for item number three, the next one I think is item number four. Which is the uh, seventy-two Sunset Beach Road. The special exception uh, for grading and the coastal site plan. So we see Evan's pulled up his uh, recommended findings and conditions. Is there anything else, is this, uh, I think this is it, right? There's nothing we had to add?
We can add the stockpile requirement if you'd like. Um, but as Mr. Freddy stated, didn't think it was necessary. Um, so it's up to you guys, what would you like?
Well, if the professionals don't seem it's necessary, I, I don't think we need it, but. Anyone else, anyone else? Have any thoughts?
Marcy here, I don't think it's needed.
Okay. Okay, then, then uh. Fairly straightforward application, if someone make a motion, we approve the application by adopting the findings and conditions. Set forth in Evan's staff report, which are presently on the screen before us.
Fred Russo, so moved.
Motion made by Fred, is there a second?
Sharon, two seconds.
Second by Sharon, any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe Chadwick?
Chadwick is in favor.
Fred?
Fred Russo in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
Sharon?
Sharon is in favor.
And the chair is also in favor. So I think that's it for our public hearing items. And then that brings us then to uh. Harry, did I check, there were, was no other correspondence, is that correct?
Uh, Harry Smith Town Planner, yes, you did, and there is no other correspondence.
Okay, that brings us into old business. Item number one of old business is the K O P Branford LLC. That's uh, ten twenty-five, uh. Ten ninety-one West Main Street, that's the Big Y Plaza Site Plan Modification. Parking of lot lighting, you may recall, we had some discussion about that, and Bob Creland had made an appearance, and there's. I think a discussion about getting the full cutoffs that were needed. Is there any uh, uh, do, do we need uh, the? Uh, I, I see the applicant here, I see Mr. Uh. Uh, Tronberg is here, um, how do you wanna proceed, uh, Harry, Ms. Tronberg, how, how would you like to? Tronberg wanna make some additional comments or?
Yeah, Harry Smith Town Planner, I defer to the applicants representing Mr. Tronberg to. Present, I believe, the revised plans that I received Tuesday.
Thanks.
Alrighty, thank you, uh, Mar- Marshall Tronborg, Onsite Lighting, uh, representing uh, Kimco Realty. Um, I did resubmit uh, some new plans uh, with some additional shielding options, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen here. Once I get to where I need to be. Alright, is this showing my? Plans, you see the plans in front?
Uh, yes, we see them.
Okay, so, yeah, so in a, a- addition to our. Site lighting plan, we've included, um, I'm gonna kind of zoom in a little bit here, so you can see it a little better. Um, this is a manufacturer supplied, um, additional cutoff shield. Uh, that we're looking at, well, it's, it's now included in our plans to, to install on. All of the parking lot fixtures, um, this is actually a. It, it's, it's a turtle shield, uh, is what it's called, actually, um. It's designed for the areas of southeastern United States, specifically the coast of Florida. Um, and it, what it does is it, it actually accomplishes the exact task that we're trying to accomplish here. Um, with a sea turtle consideration versus a human consideration. Essentially, for those of you who aren't aware, sea turtles, they, they nest in, on the beaches, they lay their eggs. Um, when the eggs hatch, the, the, the turtles actually climb out through the sand, uh, dig their way out, and they. Uh, instinctually travel towards the east as the sun is rising. Um, and that's what kind of triggers them to move that direction towards the ocean. Uh, the turtle shield is designed to prevent the direct light from the intense LEDs. From confusing the sea turtles and making them move in the opposite direction, usually further inward or inland. Um, across, you know, roadways and, and such, putting them in a dangerous position, so. Um, this actually, you know, it's, it's kind of uh, an interesting. Method here that accomplishes what. Was requested of us. Um, and um, is, is easily installed, uh, the applicant has. Uh, agreed to install these on all the parking lot fixtures. Um, as that was sort of, you know, kind of the main issue that was presented. Um, through the, the staff report previously, um. There are some additional things, uh, one of the a- additional notes uh, made by the staff was. Our canopy fixtures that are located in the, within the plaza, in the shops buildings in between the coals and the Big Y. Those that had previously not been modeled photometrically. Um, we have modeled those now, and contributing light is shown on the plans. And is in compliance with the regulations, um, at least to our understanding. I think what I would do at this point is I'm actually gonna turn it back over to Harry for his uh, staff comments, and then I'll, I'll. Wanna have, you know, have some additional comments after he's done, if that's alright with everyone.
Uh, Chuck Anderson, certainly, Harry, do you wanna review your comments?
Yeah, Harry Smith Town Planner, um. Appreciate getting the revised plans, uh, to get them on Tuesday, um. Yesterday and last night and this, today, this morning, um, put together revised staff memo and some recommended um. Conditions that I'll go through, um. Let's see, I just pick up where Mr. Tronborg left off, um. So the shielding, I did review that with um. Bob Creland, our lighting consultant on the original uh, set of uh, lighting regulations back in the nineties. Um, he agrees and thinks that this will actually achieve the. Uh, limitation um, of controlling direct light uh, from the proposed fixture, so. I think that's um. The major thing we were looking to see, and we have it now in place. As was just mentioned, the canopy lights now modeled in the photometric plan. I'm gonna re- um. Share my screen and um. Give you the results of. Quick site visit I took out to the. I will look at the plans first, actually. So I'm gonna. Hopefully should be able to see the foot candle. Read out there, um. Everything does comply in the interiors area of the parking lot. Um, in terms of foot candle readings. Um, and it does drop off, you'll see it's zero point zero, zero point one at the property line. On the southern edge, and I'll just back. Off to um, Short Beach Road, and the drop off is pretty clean there as well. Going down to um, you know, the area of the property that's the site of the Bank of America. When you go over to um. The property line with the commercial use between this site and Alps Road. Which comes in down here on the right side of the screen, this is the site of the Wendy's Restaurant. And most of that's pretty clean too, until you get up to the corner here. Uh, there's a location where there's exist, two existing pole lights with the shoebox type. Uh, fixtures. Um, in this plan, there is a double-headed fixture proposed here on the corner. And a replacement single-headed fixture that would be LEDs. The foot candle readings underneath the double-headed fixture. You know, you got up about, you know, two and a half foot candles here. Just inside the property corner, it's not as clean a cutoff, and part of that is, I think, due to this. Uh, one of the heads of the double-headed fixture here. Uh, these are wall-mounted lights here about fourteen feet high, I believe, they'll be on the back of all these tenant spaces. Um, going in this little neck here, this is where you can. Walk through um, between this part of the parking area, you can actually walk through here into the main parking area. And the uh. The canopy covered area in front of the small tenant spaces. So I mean, that could be reworked a little bit, so it's a little, small concern there. There are, I'll move here to um, a graphic, I have not shared with the applicant yet, so I just made it tonight. Um, this is the result of a site visit um, I took this morning and um. I didn't have a chance to pop out there, um, was hoping to do it before the meeting. Um, this is the area that's hatched in, wasn't hatched in the plan. That is the location of the Bank of America, and the lights have been approved around there previously by the commission. So looking around other portions of the site outside of the parking area. Basically along the perimeter of the buildings on the. The back and the front side, there are several sconces along coals, and all the lights around coals. Appear to be um, compliant, full cutoffs. I don't think the s- sconces in front have any uplighting. But I wanna double check the ones around uh, this area here, which is five, the five below tenant space. Um, in the back of house, there will be some new. Uh, wall-mounted lighting proposed, these fourteen-foot-high fixtures. Uh, currently, and, and it's not clear that you'll be removed, there's a small blister pack and several small spotlights over doors. A couple of them appear to be inoperable, um, and that's the case as you go around the corner here. And also behind some of these other small tenant spaces, um, closer to Big Y. Um, so all of that is not compliant and really should go. And it looks like it's gonna be replaced by these uh, wall-mounted fixtures that are included here. When you get down the alleyway here beyond the loading space, um. Or one of them, along the back of the Big Y, um. Part of the building, uh, you've got one, two, three, four, five, um, what they call blister pack lights, which shine directly out. And there actually is one facing uh, West Main Street, one over one of the, a utility door. Into the side of the Big Y tenant space. Uh, those are all not compliant and should be removed also replaced. So that would be a recommendation to staff. And I picked that up in the staff report. The other comment that was not addressed, um. Is the correlated color temperature, the commission's been limiting that to three thousand degrees Kelvin light sources. Which are less blue-white, white, and closer to a more. If you will, natural light. Um, we did, um, I think, put in the record a publication the commission received. Um, regarding the impact of those kind of higher color temperature lights and the negative impact they could have on. Uh, people's health and glare and so forth. Um, so based on health, safety, welfare in the past, uh, the commission's limited the correlated color temperature of. These LED lights to three thousand degrees Kelvin or less. Um, so I don't know if that just wasn't picked up, but you know, right now they propose at four thousand degrees, which is. Closer to the Kai Hi, blue-white kind of light. So let me go back to my staff report here and just run through that quickly. Oh, I do wanna, what, what quick thing that I did not pick up here? So there's one existing fee, uh, light fixture that's been added, I don't know when it was added. Oh, right adjacent to the um. West Main Street Route One entrance, right next to Big Y. So that fixture is not proposed, as I understand it to have a shield. It's pretty close to Route One, um, I'd recommend it did get a shield or be replaced with one of the. You know, new fixtures, for example, the one over here and the uh, Short Beach Road. Entrance into the plaza, that's going to have a shield, so that would eliminate the direct light coming from that fixture. So going back to my staff report, um, I think I pretty much covered all the, um, I sent this off to the commission this afternoon, I apologize for the lateness of it. But I was trying to respond to the applicant's. Advised plans and move this long as quickly as I could. Um, so new comments here in bold, um, I think I've covered everything here. Um, the shield has been described. Um, as I think was mentioned, there's no data available for the impact of this shield on the foot candle readings in the photometric plan. So that, um, we don't know in terms of the numbers on the. The plot plan for the photometrics, uh, what the impact would be, but the applicant is going to do it, I think that will handle the direct light. Talked about that little impact on the corner of uh, the Wendy's property. Going back here. These wall-mounted lights are probably about. I measured it out about forty-five feet or so from the property line. They are not proposed to have any shielding, they're about fourteen feet up in the air. So. I'm a little concerned that they may create some direct light onto the Wendy's property. I'd recommend the shield to be added, they really only illuminate. I'd recommend the shield to be added. They really only illuminate this pretty narrow driveway area. So I don't think the fixture really needs to throw the light out that far, but I'd be interested to hear um, what the response might be from Mr. Tromberg about that. And I talked about the correlated color temperature. And the non complying preexisting lights, so getting down here to some posed conditions. One A would uh, this would. Proposed required changes to the plans, that all the light sources be three thousand degrees Kelvin or less. That the use of uh, the shielding that was shown on the detail sheet. It clearly indicated all the other sheets, the plans, just so any contractor is not confused. Um, a note would do it. And then, as I just mentioned, adding the shielding proposed to the wall mounted fixtures between the Wendy's property line and the adjacent building. And again, looking at that light output from those two fixtures on the corner up. The very um, northeasterly corner of the Wendy's site, where just, there's a little bit of light spill. Um, E would talk about the, that existing fixture on the West Main Street entrance, adding a shield to that or replacing it with a. A new fixture such as the KP one with a shield. Um, and F would require the removal replacement, it's desired of all non conforming. Building mounted lights on the building occupied currently by the big Y and the other commercial tenants. I think the other number two here. Has to do with um, these wall mounted lights, which are pretty far back from the property lines. I think they probably would not be visible off the property line, but that should really just be confirmed, um, so this condition. Um, requires that there be some demonstration, they won't create glare or direct light. Um, three is the boilerplate lighting condition for any future additional lights that they uh, conform with the regulations. Fixed non adjustable arm mounts and the correlated color temperature again be less than three thousand degrees Kelvin. So I will stop there and uh, see where the comments Mr. Tromborg has. And stop sharing my screen.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, um, Marshall Tromborg once again here, um, so I guess. Yeah, to respond to a few of the, the comments and recommendations, um, you know, obviously we, we handled the. Um, the shielding uh, that was requested, um. I guess I'm gonna kind of go through the, the recommendations, just as you did at the end there and kind of provide some comments as well as. Sort of give uh, overview of what the applicant is. You know, what their, what their desire is, so. To start off with the three thousand Kelvin color temperature, um, you know, the, a lot of that's driven through that. AMA report, the American Medical Association report that's included in the record. Um, we're very familiar with that report, uh, it's very, very common. Usage uh, for lighting regulations across the country. Um, or at least i- is a, you know, included in, in similar conversations. I will say that, uh, in general, um, the applicant as well as, as a lighting designer onsite lighting. Uh, certainly supports the findings of the American Medical Association and what that report states. Um, especially when you're talking about roadway lighting, limited use parking lots such as like church parking lots or areas where there's not going to be. Uh, large amounts of people uh, for large periods of time, um, also especially in residential zones is especially important. Um, the applicant as well as, is the opinion of onsite lighting, we have a hard time with. Retail shopping centers and, and being three thousand Kelvin. Um, something that happens with the correlated color temperatures, as you reduce that Kelvin temperature. It actually reduces something called the CRI, which is the color rendition. Um, and basically what that means is the lower the cu- the color temperature, the more difficult it is for your eyes to perceive differences in color. So think about, especially, you know, back, put, put yourself back in, let's say, the nineteen twenties. When, you know, there was oil lamps or, uh, you know, or even candlelight and think about how it's difficult to see. Different colors with that, you know, very yellow mellow light. Certain applications, it certainly makes a lot of sense to use that. We don't find in a retail shopping mall, but that is an effective and. Safe feeling environment that is welcoming to customers. Um, especially when a lot of times there's going to be more customers. In and around the shopping center during the holiday season, when it's generally a little bit darker during, during the evening hours. Um, also, you know, um, big Y being, you know, I'm not as familiar with big Y, but it's a grocery store essentially, so. People are going to be in and out of there after, you know, daylight hours, so. It's our assessment that it's actually quite important that we maintain the existing color temperature, which is four thousand Kelvin. Um, onsite lighting does work all over the country with Kimco Realty as well as other. Uh, retail real estate investment trust companies that own shopping centers. And I could tell you, I could probably count on one hand, the number of times that we've done. A shopping center parking lot in three thousand Kelvin. I'm not saying that that has to be the case here, but um, it's very, very, very rare. Um, and it's, it's certainly our recommendation to our customer to. Stick with the four thousand Kelvin. Um, so we're kind of taking exception to that at this point. Just because it's, it's really not an industry standard for this type of customer. Um, moving on to. The next section, um, unless anyone has anything they'd like to say regarding that right now.
Harry Smith Town Planner, I'll just point out, there are residences um, across Short Beach Road from the parking lot. Uh, there are also residences um. To the south, um, and behind coals and the tenant spaces, particularly five below, um, stretching from Short Beach Road to Alps Road. So you do have residential uses on two sides of the site. And in terms of the area behind the, and the parking lot to the rear of the building, um, those residences directly above the parking lot. And their backyards and some of the structures are right there on the other side of the property line.
Chadwick speaking, um, I, I also would, would submit that the, an attempt to make an equivalency between. Safety and color rendering indexes is a false equivalency. I, I, if there is an objection to it, it would be that the. Commercially selected colors and the brands would not, might not represent. Exactly as the, the, the original designers had intended. But I, I cannot be convinced there is a safety issue involved in that. And. I'm not really convinced that the color selections of the design. Of any of the, the, the retail establishments, there is so precise. That they would be damaged by having a color rendering index. Um, deficiency that might be created by having uh, the stipulated. Lumin level, not lumin level, but the uh, Kelvin color.
Um, Harris Smith Town Planner, Joe, I hate to put you on the spot, can I, is it? Fair to say you're speaking as a, a architect with a license in the state of Connecticut at this point?
Yeah, that's, that's a fair assessment. Okay, I, we, we, I've been through this with, with other things, but uh, yeah.
Uh, Marshall Tromborg, uh. I, yeah, we, we, we recognize that, um, you know, there's. There's, there's going to be a difference of opinions on, on color temperature. It's, it's a very hot button issue regarding. Uh, lighting design, um, all over the country right now. Uh, it's becoming more and more of an issue, I'll, I'll admit that. Um, at this point, um, the, our. The applicant is, is really. Is willing to essentially uh, comply with every other aspect of what Mr. Smith's uh. Recommendations are, with the exception of the three thousand Kelvin color temperature. And, and moving kind of on down the list a little bit here. In regards to the uh, adding, adding in a note, um. On the plan sheets for the shielding, absolutely, we can certainly do that, um, that way there's no confusion. We will also include a shield on that existing fixture of the uh, by the entrance. That you had mentioned that EX dash one fixture type will include a shield there as well. Um, we can also include the shields on the, the, the building mounted wall packs that you had mentioned along the backside of the buildings. That's, the fixtures are actually uh, compatible with that shield, so we can use that exact same shield in that situation as well. Um, that's no problem. Uh, that. Kind of takes care of a few more of those uh, sections there, let me just make sure. Um, in regards to the big Y building and those wall mounted fixtures that you had called out, uh, Mr. Smith, in, in regards to the nonconformance. Um, those are. The applicant's a kind of a weird position here because the, the, the major tenants at this shopping center, both the big Y and the coals are actually. Least required to maintain their own lighting and own their own lighting. Um, so at this point, you know, we, we can really push on them to. Bring themselves into conformance, um, they're. The way that the leases are written, they're not really required to, um. Unless, you know, someone from the, from the town essentially would, would require it. The. My customer is willing to, to kind of go down that path uh, in any way, shape or form, whether that means. You know, they just end up taking it, taking on that lighting themselves and, and replacing it or making it conform. Um, but it, you know, at this point, it, I'd like, I would kind of want to just sort of bring it up, that it's not really part of the project, it's not part of. The customer's responsibility, it's those individual tenants that own that lighting. So it puts them in a tough spot to really push anyone to do anything. But I think, you know, we could certainly try, I just don't know if, if we can promise anything at this point. Um, for that nonconforming fixture, the nonconforming fixtures that are within the property, but not included in the scope of work. Um, and then I think. Oh, in regards to the, the corner fixtures, I'll share my screen again, just so that everyone's clear on which ones I'm talking about. The fixture up here that you mentioned in the corner, there's a couple of different things we can do here, we can add, we're, we're going to be adding that, that full cutoff shield. Um, that's certainly going to impact those foot candle readings on that property line right in the corner here, will, it will definitely reduce it. I couldn't tell you exactly how much, because as mentioned, we couldn't get the necessary IES files from the manufacturer that would actually show the light output. As they reach the ground, um, we could also look at just completely eliminating that second fixture on that pole, which is probably the best option anyway. Considering the one directly next to it is, is a single fixture and of itself as well. So I think, you know, I, without having my, you know, having run that past my, my customer, I think, you know. Will, will, will push that absolutely and, and, and make that change. Um, by just essentially just removing that fixture. Um, and then, um, yeah, I guess that kind of rounds out sort of what my comments are to that and. Um, I just want to say I appreciate everyone's time and, and willingness to, to hear us out, you know, the. My customer is not trying to be a stick in the mud, um, in any way, shape or form here, we're, we, we want to get our, our lighting plan. Uh, implemented, we want to do it in the best way possible that uh, is safe and, and efficient and. And actually improves the light, because right now there's a considerable amount of outages. Um, in the, in the shopping center and we want to make sure that. In general, you know, we've got sufficient lighting for, for customers to go in and out of these stores, um, over the coming months, so. With that, I'll kind of yield my time.
Chuck Anderson's chair, thank, thank you, Mr. Tromberg. Uh, Harry, do you have any further comments, what, what, on the, on the difference between the three thousand and four thousand? Um, I guess one question I have is, what are our regulations say, or what, what are our precedent here?
Harry Smith Town Planner, I mean, based on the receipt of this document from AMA for the past. Probably two to three years, maybe longer, um, staff has been recommending all new. LED fixtures, um, have their correlated color temperature limited to three thousand degrees Kelvin. You know, uh, there are. I think communities that limit it still further, um, to make the kind of the light color. Um, something akin to an incandescent bulb, but you're talking about at that point, uh, correlated color temperature of a lot lower than three thousand. It's still pretty white, uh, I mean, I. Really don't think to add to comments from Mr. Tromborg and particularly. Um, Commissioner Chadwick, but um. It's been a standard requirement of the commission for LED lights based on that document from the AMA and potential impact. And I think the other comment, I think was maybe Mr. Tromborg is that. You know, if it might be considered differently, you're talking about a residential area, but you are bordering residential area. Um, here in terms of the uses along Short Beach Road and uh, on the south side of the property. So that's been what we've been doing, uh, there's no direct requirement in the regulations, it's really. I think I was pointing at the staff report. The commission has, um. You know, is provided the authority in the zoning regulations, um, to approve it. Subject to appropriate modifications, conditions safeguards designed to further general purposes of the regulations. And the specific purposes indicated above, and um, one of those purposes promote the health, safety and welfare. Um, it's cited in section nine point six says and object with the commission's site planner view process. And uh, that's also elsewhere in the regi- zoning regulations, so I think there's some general authority in zoning regulations to require it.
Well, I, what about like Aldi, we just approved or, you know, I'm trying to think of recent developments in Amazon, which hasn't been built, but, but I mean, those.
They, they all were required to have their lights three thousand degrees Kelvin or less. Uh, all commercial projects, um, all larger parking lot lighting installations, frankly, we're doing it with everything that's coming before us. I mean, it's conditioned on the couple, you know, the one that was approved today, it was a lighting condition put on that. Residential development, just as a standard issue, uh, three thousand degrees Kelvin or less.
Right, okay.
So it's been practiced for the last two or three years at least.
Uh, Chuck Fred Russo?
Sure.
I'm just curious, what are the, what is the Ca- Calvin, Calvin average or the existing lights there now? How are they rated?
Um, there, I believe, well, I refer to Mr. Tromborg, I think they're metal halide shoeboxes, are they not?
Yeah, uh, Marshall Tromborg, that, that is correct, they are metal halide, uh, generally speaking, now you can, I, you can get metal halide in different color temperatures. But generally speaking, metal halide is four thousand Kelvin, so we're not proposing a change necessarily in the correlated color temperature. Um, I will, um, I guess, sort of. You know, I'll, I'll concede the point that. As lamps, especially metal halide, as they age, they do tend to reduce the lumin output as well as, you know, they will change color a little bit. So they're probably going to look a little bit less than four thousand right now, but as they're, they're rated at four thousand Kelvin currently.
Also, I believe, you know, the proposed light levels, even though they are within the limits of the zoning regulations currently. Are probably a lot lower on that property due to some of the factors you just cited, some of the bulbs are out. And we could go back to the uh, existing photometric plan, I believe the light levels are. Gonna be bumped up by this proposed, you know, scheme of redoing the lights. Pretty significantly, so there's that to consider also. Now, I will concede it's pretty dark out there right now, um, it's not ideal at all.
Okay, and then the other point you raised was that at least a couple of the big tenants, I, I guess big Y. That the lease requires that the tenants are responsible for their own lighting, although I assume the lease says they got to comply with the law too and. You know, and if this is the law, whatever, uh, I, I don't know, um. Did, what, what do we do with that one?
Um, as far as I know, I mean, the uh, property owner is responsible for complying with the zoning regulations. Make sure the tenants comply with the zoning regulations, so. Um, I don't know what the lease says, of course, but, um. You know, if a zoning violation is issued, we don't issue them to tenants on properties, we issue them to the owner of the property and that's legally what we have to do. So, that's my understanding.
Yeah, and, and I understand the owner would work with the tenant.
Yeah, yeah, imagine, yeah.
Right. Okay, uh, any questions, comments from any members of the commission?
I want to say, uh, Fred Russo, one, one other question. I want to say Fred Russo, one one other question. So Harry, are we to believe that? The if the parking lot had new light lighting fixtures at three thousand. It would be brighter because of the number that are not lit on a regular basis here. Then three thousand would give you actually more light than what's there now.
I certainly think that's true. I I know what the applicants representative thinks, but. I think it would be a big jump in light level, even at the three thousand, absolutely.
I would agree with that assessment as well, regardless of which color temperature. We, you know, happens here, the the light levels are certainly going to be increased. It's it's part of the essentially the nationwide rollout that Kimco Realty has in in written in their specifications. This is it. This project differs in no way from any other project that they've done elsewhere in the country and we've done. We've been working with Kimco for. Almost ten years now, so.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions, comments from commission members? Mr. Trumber, do you have any further comments? We'll go into deliberations, but if anything else you'd like to say to us before we discuss this.
No, I think I'm all right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Trumber. Okay, then, so let's discuss this, guys. I, we've got the staff recommendations. Looks like the the only questions were, I think, on. One A, which is the Kelvin, and then possibly one F, which regards the tenants, but it seemed, you know. I I think that that seems to be workable. So. Joe, what do you think? Joe Chadwick, because you think you commented as as an expert, do you, you have any thoughts?
Practically speaking, a lot of these lighting systems are controllable. And. It might be reasonable to expect that if they are controllable, that. They could be tuned to allow to have the four thousand Kelvin. For the early evening and then at a certain point they cut out, cut back to. The three thousand. Now, the problem with that is that you're depending on. A timing device and and some honesty on the part of whoever's timing it. And the fact that it's not going to be automatically reset. And any dimming system I've ever seen gets obsolete within, you know, six months after you install it. So depending on the technology to. Which I I admit hasn't even been offered yet, but the fact that it exists. Would probably not be, you know, that helpful. I, at this point, I really do not see the big wet hairy deal of. Going to. The value that we stipulate. It it's not going to diminish anybody's brand quality. I I think the overall lighting level is going to be improved regardless. And. It will be consistent with the rest of the commercial developments in the town that conform to that lighting lighting value.
Thanks, Joe. I mean, my my inclination is if if we've done it, and this is this is the standard we've applied. To other retail. I mean, that's why I mentioned Aldi, you know, that's that's a retail development and. You know, we we should probably continue that, provided there's no safety reasons or whatever, and it sounds like you're. Yeah, no, no one's that it is an improvement over what it is now, and so. I guess I'm sort of leaning that way too. What what do Fred thoughts?
I I agree with Joe, I agree with you too, Chuck. I think the fact that. The new lighting plan, regardless of what the numbers are, is going to be better than what's there now. So it's going to give them increased lighting, and I think what we are doing is. Going back and forth about numbers, whether it's three thousand or four thousand, but the bottom line is what we're. I've asked for is going to improve the lighting there, and that's generally what we're trying to do, improve the lighting without having. Blood all over the place. So I think I would agree that we stick to our guns and we do three thousand.
Great. Thanks, Fred. Marcy, any thoughts?
Uh, yeah, Marcy here. I'm learning a lot about lighting. I think that it's very important to stay consistent with what we require across other developments like this in town. I don't. Or haven't heard a reason why this should be the exception. You know, I know it's it's established, but if you're going to upgrade your lighting, you need to do it to conformance. That being said, you know. Do they, you know, do we require tenants who aren't upgrading their lighting to do that? I mean, I would be willing to wait for the big Y tenant to, you know. Do their individual lighting at a later date. As a as a form of compromise, but I don't tend to think that I would want to see a compromise on our standard. It would be more, you know, I do want to see something happen. I do want, I do agree there should be improvement, but I don't want to see the improvement. Not conform to what we're doing on other properties and if, you know, I don't think the compromise is. Is changing our requirements. I think it's maybe delaying what, you know, maybe big Y does because they're not. Doing their improvements or something along those lines on the building.
Hey, thanks, Marcy. Sharon, any thoughts?
Yeah, I basically agree with. With Fred and Chuck and Joe that we should maintain our standards in town. And I also think that if the AMA thought that this was important enough. To make a statement about how it affects people's health, that we should probably listen to that.
Okay, thanks. Okay, then, so. I, it it sounds like there's a consensus that we go with the one A, the the staff recommendation, which is one A on the three thousand. And then the other question is, do we want to do anything with returns of the tenant stuff? I mean, I'm I'm certainly flexible, giving them more time to do it. But but I I kind of agree with Harry that. Be because they they'll have no, okay, there's no reason for them to change their life. There's nothing that would require them to do it, right? I mean, why would you? So so it's like now's the time, so, but but I agree, they, you know, that's. Give them time, but. But there there's nothing necessarily. I I can't imagine there's anything. If there's anything in the lease, it'll just say that they have to comply with the law. Well, there's the law. I mean, this is, you know, this is a zoning requirement now. And so still here we go, so and and the landlord will work with them for that. So I'm okay with it as is with the understanding that. That'll be last on the list and and, you know, give them time to comply with that.
Yeah, Harry Smith Town Planner, you you know, if that is problematic with the tenant. Prior to. You know, a sign off being issued by the building department in terms of everything being done and zoning signing off on that. That could be bonded for, so when it hold up, everything moving ahead. So that that's a possibility. We can deal with as staff, terms of implementing the approval.
Okay. So then it sounds like the the issue. Do do we want to adopt the the approval? With as drafted essentially is what we're looking at, so. Do you want to pull that up here?
Sure. So I should be able to see the proposed conditions. Again, we've gone through it all, so. One A, B, C, D, E, and F is the replacement nonconforming lights. Two, this is the shielding for the wall monitor that wasn't a concern, and this is a general. Condition for any future lights.
Okay. Does anyone have any further thoughts or comments? That then someone will make a motion to approve this application with the conditions set forth and. Harry's staff report dated November seventeenth that he's presenting to us on the screen right now. The three conditions, including all the subparts.
Sharon Hutner will move.
Motion made by Sharon, is there a second?
Red Rose is second, sir.
Second by Fred. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Joe Chadwick?
Chadwick is in favor.
Fred?
Fred Russo in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
Sharon?
Sharon is in favor.
And Chair is also in favor. So that application is approved. So then going on with the old business. Item number two, we got a public hearing for the eighth. And also item number three, public hearing for the eighth. Item number four and five. Is, I believe that's the Stony Creek Brewery PDD modification. With addition of a building with a brewery. And there's a request that is there, is there a request for a waiver of public hearing on this? Harry, what's going on with this?
Uh, Harry Smith Town Planner, yes, there is, and we have a representative, the applicant with us tonight. It's attorney Megan Miles. And. If you'd indulge her, I think she wants to present rationale for the waiver of the public hearing.
Thank you, Chuck Andrews. Thank you. Yes, you may proceed, Ms. Miles.
Thank you. Yes, I, for the record, Megan Miles, I am a land's attorney at Carmody, Torrance, Sandown, and Hennessy. Office at one nine five Church Street in New Haven. I submitted a letter for the commission and to put into the application file earlier today. So for a very brief, one sentence summary of the application, it is to add additional fermentation tanks. To the existing brewery at Stony Creek Brewery. This does necessitate a small building addition. The tanks will be installed indoors. Drew above the roof of the new addition. So the existing brewery building. It's a little, it's approximately fifty nine thousand square feet. The addition is only nineteen hundred square feet. So it's a very small addition solely to add additional fermentation tanks. And the tanks are needed to increase brewing capacity for offsite retail and for stores. Elsewhere in the area. So there's no new patron area. It's it's really just to install additional tanks. So there's no need to change the PDD standards, so I felt that this shouldn't even require a PDD modification. Town Planner Harry Smith let me know that historically, because the. Building is being added on to, historically that has been treated as both a site plan modification and a PDD modification. I can see that he is the town planner. I am not, so in many respects, we defer to him on that. So I submitted my letter in case that I don't think this is necessary, but I do defer to to Mr. Mr. Smith on this and. I note that the zoning regulations, though nonetheless, for applications that are as minor as this. Does permit the commission to waive public hearing under these circumstances, so that was the request I submitted. Detailed in my letter, I feel the waiving public hearing here is wholly appropriate because the request is very minor. It's a small addition to an existing brewery. And it's also a small addition that will not permit any increased patronage or any increased visitors to the site. It's to for research and development purposes and for to make more beer for stores. And then also it's in no way changes the nature of the PDD. It's a natural expansion of a brewery. By adding additional fermentation thing. So for those reasons, to submit, public hearing here should be waived.
Chuck Anderson, thank you, Ms. Miles. Harry, do you have any thoughts or one way or the other in this that you'd like to suggest for us or?
Harry Smith Town Planner, we as staff support the request. Commission's curious. I think we have an elevation drawing. What's being proposed, but I think it was well described by attorney. Miles and it's, you know, tucked away essentially in the corner of the building and. Can't really envision, you know, any impact on. You know, running properties across the river and so forth.
Okay.
Did you show us the drawing, please?
Hopefully, I just tried to grab it and I don't know if Evan has it available.
I have a. Also, I could share.
I think Evan's got it, though.
But I did not have that prepared. Yes, exactly.
So you can see it's a low one story building with the glass and the brick and the roofing element. And then the tanks looks thin beyond that. But not any higher than the existing building.
And we we did already present this to the town center revitalization review board as well earlier this month. They were favorable.
Excuse me, could you just clarify, is it the three silver tanks that are being added?
Yes, and the kind of brick, glass window structure. The cursor is on right now.
Okay, thank you.
The the tanks, the connection points and the the knobs. And my nonengineering speak at the bottom need to be protected from the elements is my understanding, so that's what necessitated the the brick and architectural wall around it.
Which will have a roof, yeah.
Which will have a roof, that's correct.
Fred Russo, but the tanks are partially exposed to the outside.
That's correct. Yes, they extend through the roof. Yes. Yes.
Oh, I I'm, I'm sorry, you can continue.
No, I was just gonna, I was just adding that that's a very common aesthetic for breweries in New England, particularly ones that have. Are in industrial style and former industrial zones.
Sharon Hutner here, I have a question. What kind of vehicles do you use to? Transport this beer to the outside. Stores where they're sold.
So, oh. I think it's just traditional delivery vehicles. I actually, I don't have that that detail with me tonight. I think it would just be the standard on delivery schedule that the brewery currently follows. I don't know if it would, if it would increase that or not.
That's what I'm concerned about. I'm just concerned that it would increase the traffic. If this is what the purpose of these. Structures are for, then it'll increase the traffic, bringing that beer out to the public. So I'd just be curious, are we talking about big trucks? Are we talking about vans? What what are we talking about?
Yeah, and that's that's certainly details we could also provide you with the the formal site plan review application. The the, my understanding is that current deliveries. That this, the level of increase here would it not say double retail, offsite retail capacity for the brewery? The the additional, the additional, the reason for the additional tanks is threefold. One is actually for onsite research and development. The and and part of that is reason two is that the brewery actually is starting some really exciting collaborations with area. Other area businesses for new flavors. So it's both for R and D for new flavors and also creating those, having a tank to actually create those new flavors. And then it is to increase offsite. So this isn't a doubling of the fermentation or the doubling of offsite. Retail from the the facility. It really is more of a natural just growth and progressive progression. And I don't believe it's in the brewery's interest to have a significantly increased delivery cycle that. I mean, it's an active brewery with patrons and visitors that would in any way adversely impact that or the the roadway system. So it's in their interest that it's very minor in scale when it comes to deliveries. My sense is that more crates would be added to the truck that's coming to deliver and not necessarily more trucks would be coming back and forth.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and but your question is well taken, and I will certainly have an exact answer for that on site planning.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions by anyone? I mean, go ahead, sorry. Did just, I mean, the criteria is. It it it, do we consider this minor in nature or does it alter the the nature of the special exception use? And I I think it, and again, we're talking about just waiving the public hearing. I think the nature of the special permit is. The special exception is not being changed. It's more the same, and it does seem to be relatively minor. I mean, this isn't an issue of. You know, there, you know. This this is about brewing beer. This isn't about outdoor concerts or other things like that. So so, you know, I'm I'm okay with this one. But I don't, what do you, what do you guys think? Joe Chadwick, what do you think? Joe, Joe, you're muted.
Thank you, I'm sorry. I I I feel like this is is like a a total non-issue. Since since I have been become a dog owner, I walk by the brewery a lot. It is always clean, always taken care of. You would not know there's a brewery going on there.
You would not know there's a brewery going on there. Um, in, anything I could do in support of that place is uh, you know, is not enough. So I, I think within the scope of, of what we're permitted to do uh, we're well within our means to do it.
Okay, so you're in favor then.
Totally in favor.
Right, Fred?
Uh, I, I agree with Joe. I also say that this is not a proposal to put in the kitchen or catering or um, altering what they're doing. This to me sounds like it's all about production. And so this is not designed to uh, get more people technically, you know, into their uh, it's not an attraction, get people into their brewery. I think they just need another place to store their beer. And whatever they do with it, I, I don't see it as being um, offensive or or changing uh, what the original intent of the brewery was. It's going to do more of the same. I'm glad that they need more spaces. They, they have been, I agree with Joe about that. I think the uh, the owner has been a very, very good guy in terms of um, cooperating with, with the commission. And so I would be in favor without, without a public hearing.
Great. Okay, favorite way in the public hearing, great. Marcy?
Hi, I'm Marcy here. I agree with what's been said. Um, I think it's great that they're working on developing their product line. I think that it's always important to do that to, to stay current and relevant in the industry. So I certainly wouldn't want it um, impinge upon that. But I do think it's a minor, minor issue. As far as, you know, continue what we're doing.
Thanks, Sharon?
Yes, I um, I appreciated the um, the explanation and I have to agree that um, the brewery is a wonderful addition to Branford.
Great. Okay, and I also agree they meet the criteria for waiving a public hearing for uh, for something like this. So so does someone make a motion to waive the uh, public hearing for the uh, modification uh, that's, that's proposed here? Uh, waive the public hearing for, this is the PDD master plan modification.
Marcy will make that motion as presented.
Uh, motion made by Marcy is their second.
Fred Russell seconds it.
Second by Fred. Any further discussion? All in favor? Joe Chadwick?
Chadwick is in favor.
Fred?
Fred's in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
Sharon?
Sharon's in favor.
And yours also in favor. So we're probably, Harry, my correct, will probably, this will be on our December eighth.
Uh, that, that is the plan, yes. Thank you.
Great. Okay, so thank you, Ms. Miles, and we'll see you on our next meeting. Okay, thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
So uh, that brings in the item number six, uh, which I think we can just uh, table that one, that's something that just came in or, or what's going on? Six and seven?
Recommend tabling six and seven. We're looking into uh, whether those applications really need to come before the commission or not, so.
Okay, so we'll table items number six and seven. And then for new business, uh, we've got the eleven lot re-subdivision. You have to, what to schedule a public hearing for that one? Um, probably January or?
Yeah, Harry Smith Town Planner, looking at January at this point, given what's on the agenda. Um, so that would be the case for um, all of the items under new business.
Right, yeah, they're all, I think first three relate to that subdivision.
Yeah.
And the same one, uh, last one as well. Okay, that brings in the other business planners report. What's going on?
Um, I just want to give an update about the uh, joint meeting we talked about with the Coastal Vulnerability Working Group, um, kind of regrouping here for maybe later that week after Thanksgiving, um, just to get a sense, um, is there anybody here who knows uh, one way or the other, where they would be available on Thursday, the first, which would normally be the commission meeting night. We pushed it off to the eighth to sort of reduce the, the gap between the last meeting in December, we skipped the second meeting and the first meeting in January. So um, if that's a possibility with the commissioners, I will explore uh, whether that could be done with the uh, Coastal Vulnerability Working Group people and get back to everyone. So how was that? How does that look?
Uh, I can make the first, I think. Yeah, I had it as a normal planning zoning thing anyway on my calendar anyway, so. Joe Chadwick, do you know?
Uh, yeah, I actually, I, I auto-scheduled that date myself for uh, planning and zoning, so. Right. You own it.
Fred, Fred, do you know?
I, I'm, I'm in. I, I'll be able to do it on the first.
Great. Marcy?
I'm not sure. I tentatively might have something scheduled, but it's not confirmed. So I will certainly try to make that work, but I can't fully commit.
Sure, no, I understand. Sharon?
I'm available.
Okay. And I, so, okay, well, we'll see, we'll see what we do.
Yep, I'll bring it up with the Coastal Vulnerably Working Group people and hopefully you can make that work. Uh, let's see, um, I think that's it unless some I have this idea, I'm forgetting something to report and probably I am, but let's move on to the meeting schedule. Um, which the commissioner should have all had in their packets. And um, we're talking about regular dates in January and February, the first and third Thursdays. Um, due to Passover, which I believe happens the first um, Thursday around there in April. Um, we're proposing having three meetings in March, since there are five Thursdays, so that would be um, I don't have my twenty twenty three calendar here.
Yeah, I, I don't have mine either in front of me. Um, the, the important days for Passover are the first two days, because that's when the staters are. So that would be like Tuesday night and Wednesday night, April
Oh, okay.
Fourth and fifth.
So the, the uh, regular meeting
April thirteenth would work.
Um, well, normally we're on the sixth and the twentieth, the first and third. So would the sixth work?
Oh, would begin in the eve, no, the sixth will not, sorry. It begins the evening of April fifth. Okay, sorry.
Okay, alright. So that's what we, yeah. So that's why I'm proposing moving it back. So in March, there is uh, five Thursdays. So you're talking about the second, the sixteenth and the thirtieth, which would be every two weeks. So would it be? It would be sort of a normal cyclone that sets. And then we'd have a two week gap uh, between the thirtieth and the second meeting. Uh, normal meeting in April on the twentieth. And we'd be avoiding Passover. Okay?
That works, Sharon?
Yes, I said, I appreciate that.
Yeah, okay. Uh, yeah, I can't make June first. My daughter's getting married. I'm going to a rehearsal dinner.
Oh, exciting.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I won't be here, um, January nineteenth. I'm going to be in Chile.
Oh.
Oh, that's exciting too.
I'm going to be in Branford.
Beautiful, possibly snowy Branford.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so I assume anyway, we'll try to keep those dates as they are. Um, and I believe in June, we've got the normal days, first, the fifteenth, July, the sixth and the twentieth. And then we have the August break. Seven, twenty one, normal, five, nineteen, normal, two, sixteen, normal. And the seventh is the first Thursday, so everything else is normal, first and third Thursday schedule.
Okay. That sounds great. Do we need a motion?
Uh, that preferably yes.
Okay, someone make a motion to adopt the uh, twenty twenty three meeting dates as set forth in memorandum that Harry has just explained to us.
Chadwick makes that motion.
Motion made by Joe is their second.
Red Russo second to it.
We'll give it to Fred. Any further discussion, all in favor, Joe?
Chadwick in favor.
Fred?
Fred, present a favor.
Uh, Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
Sharon?
Sharon's in favor.
Yours also in favor. Okay, anything else? I know we got um, election of officers, I think, uh.
Yeah, scheduled for the eighth, yes, and uh, um, I hear rumors that uh, Sharon Hutner is uh, compiling a nomination list.
Oh, yes, extensive. I have good news for Marcy, though. Fred has um, said that he would do secretary if nobody else wanted, so. Well, she should appreciate that.
I can pass the baton.
Yes.
But if you still want it, Marcy, by all means, I uh, I'm not uh, forcing you out.
I would, I would, you know, think we should do like a two or three year term and then just switch it out or, or one, you know what I mean? I think I've been about six years now or something.
Well, I do appreciate how quickly the, it all rolls right off your tongue at this point. It's pretty, it's phenomenal.
Right.
Thing to watch. All right, I don't have anything else. Evan, is there anything else that you have or?
No, nothing.
Okay.
Great.
Anyone? Anyone else got anything? Okay, someone make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion, Fred Russo. I make a motion, we adjourn.
Uh, motion made by Fred is their second.
Chadwick seconds.
Second by Joe. Further discussion, all in favor? Joe?
Chadwick in favor.
Fred?
Fred's in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
Sharon?
Sharon's in favor and have a happy and healthy Thanksgiving.
Right, same to everyone. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Happy Thanksgiving.
You too, good night.
This program was brought to you in part through the support of the town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.